I'm calling to order the September 5th, 2023 meeting of the Select Board. And the first item on our agenda is public comment. And this is an opportunity for folks who would like to speak to an issue which is not on the agenda to do so. And we ask that anyone that comes forward to speak during public comment, that you keep your remarks to three minutes. Is anyone here or in the online audience interested in offering a public comment? Vanessa, do you see any hands raised? Okay. So with that in mind, the first item on the agenda is acknowledgement of CERT team. And for those who don't know, CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. And the reason why we are addressing this this evening is that Lisa Carroll and Chief Achilles, who was over there, over here, stepped up for the town in a tremendous, extraordinary way to help deal with the unexpected situation we had earlier this summer of the migrant families who arrived and stayed in Southborough for, what was it, 10 days, 11 days on extremely short notice. So actually, if you want to come forward and just wanted to... Have you prepared something, Lisa, or...
I did, Andrew.
Okay.
So, no, just tell me...
Yeah. So how about this? If you want to just kind of, we all know who you are, but just for people in the audience who may not know who you are, to each introduce yourselves and just explain a little bit about what you did. And then we can go down the line here and offer our thoughts, acknowledgements, appreciation.
Sure. I'm Lisa Braccio, resident in town, one of the team leaders for CERT. This is Carol Willoughby. I'm the Medical Reserve Corps Coordinator, which is part of the CERT team also. So...
That's okay, go ahead.
So I wanted to take a moment, well, I have the opportunity, to thank a few people. I know that a lot took place during those 10 days. And while Carol and I may have been there during the day, there was a lot of people. It took a village to do what this town did. And I think we all have a lot to be proud of. Some of the stories that we heard there, I will carry with me for the rest of my life. I went home every night and cried to think of what these people went through to get to the little town of Southborough here. Their journey was long, dangerous, and I'm just so thankful for so many reasons and for so many people. So I thought I would just take a second if I could and just publicly thank a few people. First and foremost, every team needs a leader, and Chief Achilles was outstanding. And we have so much to be grateful for, for the job that he did. The Hamilton family, especially Andrea, who, without her translation support Friday and Saturday until John got there, I don't know what, we would have been completely lost, and I don't know what we would have done. So very grateful. Marguerite, you did shopping that was needed, much appreciated. Suma Callis from Westborough was there with us almost every day, helping. Youth and Family Services, Sarah and Christina, for emotional support and shopping for much-needed items. They spent two days getting some of the requested items, including flip-flops. The kids didn't have any types of shoes. I mean, just things we take for granted every single day. Dr. Elker from the Board of Health, she made sure the day-to-day needs, including appointments and transportation, were taken care of for people, as well as making sure the day-to-day needs were being met. Dr. Safdar Medina, who's on the Board of Health, came and did initial assessments before the Department of Public Health sent their nurses out. We had an assessment of every child and every pregnant woman there, so we could make sure they had what they needed. The staff at the Red Roof was just amazing, talking about a place stepping up to the plate at the last minute. The Hopkinton Board of Health Director, Sean McCullough, for sharing donations of new, brand-new shoes and socks that were donated to them. The Southborough Police Department for the donation of football, soccer balls, and other toys to keep the children occupied, which, if anyone knows the Red Roof, in between the two buildings, there's a large grassy area with the gazebo. And it was wonderful to see these kids being kids, you know, going through everything. The Southborough Fire for helping break down and transporting the items. I've saved the, my personal biggest two for last. Kathy, I don't know how we'll ever thank you for everything that you did. Without Kathy's support, both going shopping every single day to make sure that we could supply these people with what they needed as far as nourishment, taking upon herself to put together a program to give backpacks. So each child had a backpack, and each child had individual items and fun things specific to their age and just kids in general. They had something that was their own. And also, she arranged for the off-site laundry facilities and took care of that for these people as well. Kathy, you did a tremendous job, and we couldn't have done what we did without all the support that you did. So I, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you, thank you. And lastly, to the Southborough residents, who were so amazing and wanted to help in any way that they could. Within 24 hours of setting up a target wishlist, we had enough to fulfill the needs of the people for the remaining time that they were there, as far as much-needed breakfast and food-type items that the state didn't supply. So I will just say once again, Southborough has humbled me. We just have so much to be proud of, and we are all so very lucky to live in this town and see the generosity, the caring, and the support. So I'll leave it with that, Andrew, but just know that it took a village to do everything that we were able to accomplish. And I'm sure that I've missed people, and I apologize if I have, but these were some of the key things that stood out to us, that we wanted to make sure were acknowledged.
Right. I mean, the townspeople and, you know, Kathy and Marguerite, you guys made it easier for us to be able to do what we did for them.
Yeah. Thank you.
Kathy, do you want to...
See, I knew I wanted to go first, because I knew you would do this. So let's talk about who really were the heroes. Lisa Braccio was at that hotel every single day, from the morning till they got their meals. They got two meals a day, lunch and dinner. Her very elderly mother was here visiting. Her mother, she had to, her mother had, she just went to the hotel, went in, sat in a corner very peacefully, very happily. Lisa did this every single day. She's the one that organized everything, and Carol too. So these are the heroes right here, are these two. And I can tell you, Lisa and I, we think a lot, a lot about this kind of thing. I know that regardless of where you are, as far as this whole immigration mess we've got in this country, seeing it up front truly changes you. When you realize, you know, when you see a human being up front, I don't care what you think, you realize, and these people were so sweet and so nice, and they didn't ask anything, they just wanted, you know, they just want a chance, that's all they wanted. So let me just make sure everybody understands, here are the heroes, right here, these two ladies right here. And I want the town to know what happened. We didn't know about this until 4:30 on a Friday afternoon, when the state sent an email on an August Friday afternoon in Massachusetts to a few people, not to the Select Board, just to a few people. Mark was out mowing his yard, and our state rep happened to see the email and called. The families were already at the Red Roof Inn, so talking about having to react and not be ready. So I think this town did a wonderful job reacting. And I believe I heard that we were very popular with the Haitian families by the time they left. They really thought Southborough was kind of the best that, I mean, they've just been jerked around and place to place to place, but they seem to think that we really strived to try to help them and appreciate what we did, what little we did to try to make their lives a little bit better. So anyway, these are the heroes of the whole thing, every single day, 10 o'clock to 7 o'clock. Her car was sitting right outside that hotel room.
I will add to that point. Through the interpreter, all of our guests said that all along their journey, they've never been treated as well as they were here and given the respect that they were given here. So that says a lot about Southborough.
They were extremely appreciative, and it was wonderful to see, you know, how appreciative they were.
So lessons learned. We might want to, at some point, sit down and talk about this, so to be better prepared next time. You know, Northborough got, you know, had families before we did. It never occurred to me that we were going to end up with families here. Didn't occur, don't ask me why. So we probably ought to do something to, you know, have a plan in place next time so that we are not quite as reactive as we had to be.
Marguerite, you want to say a few words if you like, since you made...
You guys were totally amazing. It was a really exhilarating and very sad and fabulous 10 days. It felt much longer, and I don't know how you did it. I really don't. And I know that there, is it, Northborough still has people? And does Westborough still have people?
Yep.
So if anyone has...
Marlborough.
Yeah, and Marlborough still has people, so they are still dealing with it. Just something for people to keep in mind.
Al?
Well, well done. I mean, thank you. I really appreciate that. I think there are some things we should learn from this, because I suspect this is going to happen again. And I attended the regional meeting in Northborough, and, you know, I have some sympathy for the state, but it's not a huge amount. You know, they were blindsided too, you know, and, you know, but it does strike me that it would probably be useful to have a regional response of some sort, because this is a, you know, we may not be necessarily the community hosting these folks, but it's going to require substantial resources, you know, the next time this happens, and it's going to happen again. But, you know, thank you very much, you know. There are refugees in my family, and I could only hope that somewhere along the line, they were treated as well as you guys did. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sam?
I'll offer my thanks as well and follow up on Kathy and Al's point that I think a plan, at least at a high level, for future visits like this, I think is critical. As proud as I am of the Southborough response, I'm very unhappy with the state's response to this. And I'm not as charitable as Al. I think it wouldn't have taken a lot of thinking and planning to actually anticipate this on the part of the state. The sad news is I don't think we can expect a lot of help from them going forward, frankly. So I think having a plan on our own is a very wise thing. It'd be great to get that moving as quickly as possible. So again, great response from particularly you folks and all the others who helped, and it's a great thing that the community steps up like this. So thank you.
Can I add one final thing, Andrew?
Sure, and then I'll say one final thing.
Okay. Well, go ahead, you go first.
Sure. So I'm not going to repeat overly what everyone else said, but I thought it was something that really, in experience, that put a lot of other things we deal with in perspective, you know. As you know, as a former Select Board member, former chair, there's a lot of things that we deal with that sometimes feel a little bit like, you know, inside baseball or sometimes unnecessarily fighting about things. And this is something that just kind of puts everything in perspective. But I, was the room, room 102, was that the room?
103.
103, yeah.
Never forget.
So basically, you know, it was Friday evening. The only guidance we got was that the state was going to pay for two meals a day, and which were also just ferried out from, driven out from Boston and basically just plopped there and pay for the room. So that obviously leaves a lot of gaps in terms of human needs. And I was just so impressed that, you know, there was that Friday evening in room 103. What are we going to do? And just gradually, each day, the operation that you put together just became more kind of efficient, you know, identifying things that, you know, you didn't anticipate, making them better each day. And it was really just kind of, in that respect, kind of a pleasure to watch. So you want to say the last word here?
Just one final thought. I mean, this is, being a member of the CERT and the MRC team, you know, this is what we train for. This is a group of volunteers that supports Southborough, you know? We want to do everything we can. So I'm going to do a little plug here, that there, we are happily looking for new members to join the CERT team as well. But I will just lastly say that Carol and I work very well together. We bounced a lot of ideas, and we made a lot of success. One of the most successful things we did was every day at 2 o'clock, we had a community gathering at the gazebo. Snacks were given. It was a time for everybody to just give their thoughts on things that maybe they needed or things we could do, or just any issues they may have been having. So I think I speak for both of us when I say it was our pleasure to be able to step forward and use some of the training that, you know, we've been provided as well. So, and again, there are open seats on CERT.
Any particular qualifications or a set of experiences that you would be looking for?
Just somebody that cares, and again, and it's not always something like this. Sometimes it's working events, summer nights, the NECC race, you know? It's not always as intense as something like this. But again, it's just being supportive and being supportive of the fire department and the police department as needed as well.
So Lisa, dumb question. If someone's interested and they're watching, how do they contact you both?
So, gee, that's kind of a good question, gee. We've kind of reorganized a little bit.
We had the information. We put it out in my...
My Southborough had it, yeah, because we put a call, it was in there.
I sent it in there.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yes. Through, and again, Carol and I both have town emails. You can send it through us as well, and we'd be happy for...
We're kind of like getting it all together, because Neil was our director. Now Chief has taken over, so we're kind of like...
A little reorganizing, but we're still looking for good people to step forward and, you know, help in any way. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, so for the next item, does someone want to go get, there you are. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is appointment of Steve Nivert to Sergeant for the Southborough Police Department. And Chief Ryan Newell is here. Do you want to, should we wait for everyone to come in before you? Okay. There probably are enough chairs if everyone spreads out. There's still more chairs over on the right side of the room. You ready to begin?
Ready.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Newell.
Okay. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am requesting the board appoint Stephen Nivert to the position of Sergeant within the Southborough Police Department. This appointment will fill the sergeant's position that was left open when Lieutenant McCarthy was appointed to Lieutenant back in January of this year. Steve grew up in Southborough. He attended all the Southborough schools and graduated from Algonquin High School. He was first hired in Southborough PD back in 2012 as a part-time dispatcher. He was later hired as a full-time dispatcher and then a reserve in 2014. In 2016, he was hired as a full-time officer for our department, and he self-sponsored himself through the academy just before his appointment. In 2021, he was chosen to be the department's next detective, which is a role that he currently, until tonight, hopefully, is filling. He received his bachelor's degree from Suffolk University in 2012 and has completed many hours of valuable training. Most notably, he is a recipient of the Significant Leader Award, which signifies the culmination of over 88 hours of directed leadership by former FBI Leader Training Director Dean Crisp. Steve came out on top of, came out on top after completion of a full sergeant's promotional process that began five months ago. His appointment will bring our sergeant staff up to full capacity, which is five sergeants. It means that we'll have a supervisor on every shift again. I ask that you please consider my request and recommendation to appoint Stephen Nivert for the position of Sergeant within the Southborough Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Detective Nivert, do you want to say a few words to the board, or?
[laughter]
Okay. So just to begin the discussion, I am 100% supportive of this appointment, and I think that not only, you know, it's a moment for you to be proud of, but also, as a Select Board member, I'm proud of our department that we have, you know, a pipeline of candidates that have been working in the department for a long time, including two, including now Lieutenant McCarthy, who are from Southborough and now are going to be leaders in the department. So it makes me, you know, proud of the whole department. It's always great when we have these meetings to see, you know, all your brothers and sisters standing behind you to support you. Al, do you want to say anything?
No, I'm good. Move this right along and let these guys just go celebrate.
No, nothing to say, but congratulations.
Again, congratulations. Great to see someone from inside move up the ranks here. So delighted and congratulations, best wishes for a long and successful career. Thank you.
So I do have something to say. I've got a little story to tell. So Steve's parents are sitting right behind him. Steve's parents live in my neighborhood, which is Pine Hill neighborhood. So as many of you may know, during that weekend or the winter, we had that cold weather. Pine Hill had a tree go down that took down a bunch of telephone posts, so we didn't have electricity that weekend. Steve's parents lived there. His mom was, I hope I'm not in trouble, was in the hospital, and his father was there alone. And I know this because Chief Achilles and Chief Newell dispatched policemen and firemen to go house to house that weekend to make sure everybody was okay. I literally lived in my car for like 26 hours, so I was just sitting in my driveway reading a book, and here comes, tapping the window, it was Steve. So he come to my, he was to my, and he told me about his father being in the house alone. And so they had to, he needed to, he needed some help, so they needed to get him moved out of there. And yet, even though he probably wanted to be with his dad and help, and here he was doing what he was supposed to do and going house to house. So I just thought, you know, this is exactly what we need in this town. So I am very endeared to you because of what you did that weekend, and I'm very glad to see you get this promotion, and you certainly have a good set of shoes to move into with Mr., with Lieutenant McCarthy. So I'm glad that we're here to do this, and it's always so great to see this whole background that we've got back here with their uniforms on. So congratulations, and to your wife.
Okay, so I moved that the board appoint Detective Steve Nivert to Sergeant for the Southborough Police Department.
Second?
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Congratulations. Do you want to take any pictures, or?
Going to have the town clerk, Jim Hegarty, swear him in.
Okay, we'll have...
Please raise your right hand, I'm going to read the oath and acquit you. Say I do. I, Stephen B. Nivert, you solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties incumbent upon me as a sergeant for the Southborough Police Department according to the best of my ability and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Southborough Police Department, the Constitution, the laws of the United States, the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and under rules, regulation, and bylaws of my municipal employer made under the authority of the Select Board, so help me God. Congratulations, Sergeant.
We're going to have Steve's wife, Kate, and his daughter, Mackenzie, are going to pin him for the sergeant.
All right, congratulations, Sergeant. So maybe we'll just take a little quick recess to let everyone...
We're going to have everybody head downstairs.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
Two committee interviews and appointments to consider. Is Jennifer Seelig here? Would you like to come forward and introduce yourself? So you go by Jennifer or? Jen? Okay. Jen is here for seeking appointment to the golf course committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. And, you know, I looked at the application you put in and I understand you currently work at a golf course on the Cape?
Yes, I do.
So, and you play in the Women's League at Southborough Course too? Sounds like you've got an outstanding background for the golf course committee. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
I'm just, I'm interested in getting involved and been recruited to join the committee, so that's why I'm here.
Okay, all right. Kathy?
So I think this is great that you want to do this because we need, as you know, I used to be an avid golfer and, you know, grew up on a golf course and know the difference between how women play and how men play, the different things I like to do. So I'm so glad you're doing this. How do you, how do you pull off the summer thing though? You live down in the Cape in the summer?
Yeah, we have a house down there. So a few summers ago, like the kids were all working, everybody's working. And I'm like, I'm going to get a job and I'm going to get some fun. So it's sort of a second career, if you will. I work in the golf shop. I do the displays and promotion, like that kind of stuff.
I worked at Doral Country Club for two or three years, a long time, a long before. It's when the current, the original owners did it. So I learned a lot about golf too, just from doing that piece of it. So I, so this is great. We're really, we think we're, the golf course is burning off cylinders. So we just want to keep, you know, moving forward. We're hoping that once we get through this last big capital improvement, which is irrigation, that we can start actually pulling some money out to use for general fund stuff. So I am really glad you've applied to this. So thank you very much.
Sam?
Sam is someone who, very knowledgeable about the golf course and particularly capital improvements to the golf course.
Been a supporter of the golf club, golf course for a long time. And again, thank you for stepping forward. Sounds like you had a great background. And for those who are watching who may not know that despite some of the dire predictions that were made when we acquired the property, golf course is actually going gangbusters. Each year we've had it now, it's gone better and better in terms of number of rounds and revenue. I think Mark, the latest number is we expect something like eighty thousand dollars or so this year, maybe a little more.
If we have, we maintain that, the current.
Current rate. So, and again, a lot of that is part of the combination of an active golf course committee and a very supportive management company group. And so I think that there's still some upside there. And as Kathy mentioned, irrigation should certainly unlock some of that. But it's a great thing. And frankly, during COVID, it brought out a lot of people to do things in ways that they wouldn't have done before. And we wound up getting a lot of younger players and a lot of people who hadn't been thinking about that as a recreational asset started doing so and stuck with it. So it's a great asset for the town, far better than a bunch of condos put on that site that might have been an alternative there. So again, a wonderful project and a great thing for the town. And we appreciate your and the other volunteers' commitment to the course committee because I think there's a lot of opportunity there as well. So thank you.
Just thank you for volunteering and I think it's a great place to start in volunteering for the town in other capacities too, maybe later. But anyway, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you. We are in desperate need of volunteers of all shapes and sizes. Is it impolite of me to ask what your handicap is? Yeah, it is impolite. I withdraw the question.
I move that we appoint Jennifer Seelig to the golf course committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. The bad news is you don't get a discount, I don't think, in terms of greensleeves. It's a tough job.
What happens next? You'll get a letter confirming your appointment?
You should get a letter confirming your appointment. Then you need to come into the town clerk's office and get sworn in. So all that will be in the letter.
Jim, maybe.
What happens in June of 2024? Do you reapply or do you like what?
At that point, it becomes a reappointment. So if you're interested in continuing to serve, the board will then, they do annual appointments. So it's an annual appointment. As long as you're willing, usually we'll keep you.
But you don't have to come back for that one.
You don't have to come back. This is it.
You would get a letter in the mail. Do you wish to continue to serve? Yes, no. And then as long as you say yes, it would be like on the consent agenda that it would prove your appointment. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next, I think, I recognize Mr. Tipton. Frank Tipton has recently applied and expressed interest in serving on the pilot committee. And Patty Fiori, who is she the chair? Sent in an email earlier today expressing support for Frank's appointment. I had the opportunity to speak with Frank earlier, it would have been last week. And seemed like a good fit. So would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and your interests and your background for this committee?
Sure. Hello, everybody. My family and I moved into Southborough three years ago. And I have kept my eye out on perhaps an opportunity to volunteer and support the community. I'm a high school history teacher by trade, so civic life comes naturally since I talk about it day in, day out with the kids in school. I've been a high school educator for twenty-five years, most and administrator as well, some in the public realm and mostly in the private realm. I'm currently a high school teacher at the Dana Hall School in Wellesley. And having seen and sat in a little bit on the private school side of the pilot equation, I am more than happy to provide my services to the town to foster a collaborative and fair and equitable relationship between the town and our private school partners who live and work here in the community. And I think I have a good vantage point in which to offer some wisdom. So I'm delighted to offer my services. And especially that I work at the Dana Hall School, so there is no conflict of interest. I'll just put that out there.
So just to mix up the order of things, Marguerite, do you, we'll just begin with Marguerite. Do you have any questions or for Mr.?
No, I don't. I read your, your application or whatever the technical term is for it. And I thought you would have been wonderful on the tricentennial or this. So this is great. As you know, it's an interesting discussion. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Sam?
Yes, thanks for applying. And again, I agree with Marguerite. You have a great background. I think it's excellent that you have the background, which to me is an interesting balancing mechanism. Have you followed some of the conversations historically here between town meeting and other places in terms of, it's obviously a very sensitive topic in a lot of places. And clearly, there would be great value in finding a way to make the parties come together in terms of views on this, which I think there is certainly an opportunity for here. So you've sort of got some of that background, it sounds like.
Yes, I do.
So good. So again, thank you. And I support your appointment here. It's a good fit. Thanks.
Al?
Yeah, I guess I'm going to second what Sam and Marguerite have said. I think you've got a different perspective perhaps than some of us who are more fire-breathing. So I think it will be welcome to maybe cool the temperature a bit.
I'll do what I can.
Kathy?
So I actually will be on the committee with you. So I'm the select board, representative on this committee. I volunteered for this because I haven't taught for twenty-five years at private school, but I was on board of Wanted Hill for a long time. So I've seen it from that side of it too. We've got a very good relationship with our private schools. There's three. It's not just.
Right.
It's, you know, it's NEC also that contributes a lot to this town. So I'm looking forward to truly picking your brain and seeing what you think. So this will be interesting.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I move that the board appoint Frank Tipton to the pilot committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
So not just hurry, our first meeting, the next meeting is nine twenty. It's a Wednesday and it's going to be by Zoom. And you'll need to get sworn in before then so you can participate.
So how do I?
Town clerk may still be downstairs, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
He was just here. And then it's when?
Nine twenty, September twentieth, which is a Wednesday.
At time?
I believe it is six thirty, but I don't. Joe, do you know? So. Yeah, it's about six thirty and it's via Zoom, so you can do it from home.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is FY twenty-five. Look at that. I cannot believe it's fiscal year 2025. Budget calendar and budget message. And I assume Brian, there he is. Couldn't see you over there. I didn't know if you were zooming in. Okay. And you have a slide deck, right?
Yeah, I wasn't going to put it up, but I do have the.
I think if we can put it up, it's, you know, helpful for everyone else to see and follow along as well.
So basically, the the data presented, I think the most important thing tonight is to get the calendar set because that really sets the base for the year. So that's kind of what I was hoping we could.
And before you get into the substance of it, Brian, in preparing for this meeting, and I was talking with Mark, Mark suggested that if members of the board have questions about, under the consent agenda, appointment to the insurance advisory committee, that Brian would be a good person to speak to about that as well. And another thought that I had, because Kathy, you have under members report an update on the Near East School Building Committee. And as I was reviewing the slide deck, I was thinking, you know, maybe it makes sense for you to weave in your discussion after Brian presents so that we can, because the pieces, the puzzle all kind of fit together, right, of the timing of the Near East School building project and how that affects.
Oh, yes.
Tax increases.
Oh, yes.
Whatever works temporarily. No, she's making me the host. That's the first slide. Okay, here's the draft budget schedule. We spoke with the chair of the advisory committee a few weeks ago. And he lent his suggestions to this also. This is the version that he carried to his committee, the advisory committee, and it appears that they supported this calendar. The, the one thing the chair did recommend is we also set a budget message. So basically what a budget message is, is kind of self-explanatory, but, you know, do you want a level service budget? We assume that the board would probably want that. It's been like that for several years. And do you have anything special that you want in drafting these budgets? Some years we have special requests for various things that the board deems important. So that obviously would need to be part of the budget message. And so we're hoping we can get those questions answered. This is pretty much in the same timeframe. It's a little tighter with the warrant being opened. Warrant was opened a little earlier last year, like a month earlier. I think it was November first. And after talking with Mr. Pfaff, it didn't, you know, he had done some research on other towns and everything. It just didn't, it was a long, long period for Southborough. I'm not sure why it was such a long period. So we shortened that to December 12th. The other thing that Mr. Pfaff also recommended as part of the budget message is that if there are new employees or services, that that be a totally separate budget. He would rather have, this is his opinion, and I tend to agree with it, he would rather have a, you know, level services budget provided. And then anything that deviates from that, the department head needs to do a different new budget with those items spelled out and enlisted. So people can understand them and understand the need and understand the cost and kind of just segregate it out a little bit. So I think this, we did push up the, you know, one of the important line items is when the budgets are due. Here is November twenty-second. We pushed that up a little. I think it was about a week later last year in the effort of recognizing that town meeting is in March. And it does provide a tight timeframe. However, you know, it is a, at some point you get, you get to that point where you can't make it too much earlier because departments won't have, you know, recent information to pass on. But we feel this is a good compromise. This also does have that joint meeting that we tried last year in January. It seemed to work very well. The one thing we did change a little bit is breaking out the schools, fire police, or some combination of those three into a different night. That maybe the select board advisory could have a joint meeting. The reason being is they're just such big departments, they almost crowd out that Saturday meeting a little bit and it makes it very tight. And I know during the afternoon, you start getting worried about making a reasonable time. It's a long day. You know, so this would allow a little more flexibility in that, in that Saturday meeting. So hopefully the board could, you know, take a position on that too. That doesn't really need to be decided tonight, obviously, because that's not for a little bit, but at some. at some point, we do need to decide, you know, who we want to see, or if we do want to see all of them on Saturday. I think the rest of it pretty much goes along with what we did last year. The only other item, and the town administrator can correct me if I'm wrong, but the only other item that was a little new was we're doing a light budget report this year. As you know, we used to do a budget report that got to be pretty big, actually, annually. And then it kind of, COVID came, it kind of fell out of favor, and we stopped doing that. But we do think there's value in having some type of budget. I don't know if you'd call a pamphlet, something that shows data and what we're proposing and has certain information in it that could be distributed to the public you know, before town meeting, so they can digest that kind of information and, you know, make decisions that they need to make and be fully informed. So we're gonna try that again this year. Obviously, being year one, we can build off of that and see what works, what doesn't, but that is in this calendar also. So I think I hit all the points. Welcome for any feedback to to get this hopefully at least settled. We do have a department head meeting next Monday. I was hoping to be able to distribute something like this on Monday, or at least most of it, so that departments could be aware of what's ahead, and it's amazing that we're talking about this, but we are, so.
I like the idea of, as much as I think that the Saturday session worked well last year, it was very long. And I like that suggestion of having at least two of the big departments come in for just a joint meeting before that, and you know, another reason it might make sense is that the police budget is where the dispatch issue would be addressed, and that's one where it gets might some more public input on it to address it in a weekday night meeting rather than a Saturday. I mean, no one came to the, understandably, no members of the public came to attend an all-day Saturday meeting at the Public Safety Building, even though it was an important meeting.
It was? Me?
Yeah, sure.
So, but I'm gonna correct you on one thing you just said.
Okay.
The seniors turned out in force for their.
That's right. That was the one.
That was well-tended. So Al, I'll look at you, because Margarita was there, not as selectwoman, but she was there for other reasons. It's the first time we'd ever done that. You normally advise you does its things, like what does its things, and we get together and try to compare notes. So this, we all thought, I think, that it really was an efficient way to do this. I know advisory did, so they were on board for it, too. And I like the idea of pulling out the, if you pulled out DBW, too, then I think you actually wouldn't have enough to do that day. So I say leave DPW on the Saturday and pull out those three, and absolutely because of regional dispatch being, some of this needs to be discussed in great depth. So I, I'm just focused on the that day. I think that, I think that it really was the right thing to do. I think it saved a lot of time for everybody, even though you have to give up a Saturday. That's okay, you know? You saved more time than you gave up.
Andrew?
Yes.
Yes.
You next. Again, schedule looks fine to me. I echo Kathy and Andrew's comment. Saturday was, I think, hugely helpful in terms of efficiency. I heard many comments from department people saying far more efficient from their standpoint to not have to go in and do the same spiel several times, and then have differences of opinion that weren't resolved out of that sequential process. So very helpful there. Question, looks to me like this doesn't really help us too much in terms of the assessor's timing as far as getting data that can help us make some of those final decisions. It's still basically the same crunch with them in terms of getting their numbers right.
That's a little bit of a different animal, but yeah.
And I'm strongly supportive of some sort of a budget summary document out of here that hopefully would be available to distribute at least moderately before town meeting, a week or two, something like that. Because one of the things we've discussed is finding ways to make the town meeting process more efficient. And you're never gonna solve the communication problem perfectly, but we waste a lot of time educating people about things that they could have found out about before town meeting. And they will stand up and ask questions and so forth, and the more we can make it easier for people to have the data they need beforehand and maybe advertise it and say, you know, here are the things you need to learn about. Not only the budget items, but if there are warrant articles that are likely to draw a lot of attention, find ways to publicize available information for those, either through My Southborough or other kind of places, town website, et cetera. So people have a better chance, at least, of coming in informed about the basic facts and then, you know, debating differences of opinion thereby, and as opposed to educating themselves on the floor of town meeting. So it sounds like this is headed in the right direction, and I support the process as you opposed it. Thank you.
Budget Saturday last year was really good. I'd been part of the library putting a budget together in, you know, iteration after iteration. In private, you'd do a 3%, a 2%, a 1%, an 8%. What do you do? How many? Ryan has not jumped out the window into the bushes yet, but he's ready to. So this was wonderful, and I think it's a huge help to the departments.
The schedule looks, you know, pretty much like every budget's schedule looks like. One thing we had discussed as a goal was setting up, trying to simplify town meeting a bit by setting up stabilization-like funds, like the funds we use for this building and also for our municipal facilities. To perhaps use that same type of structure for capital equipment, whether it be for fire equipment, police equipment, or the DPW equipment, essentially letting the managers manage, and subject, of course, to effective supervision. But that, rather than having to to worry about, you know, we had items in the last town meeting, you know, that were $15,000 and $20,000 that should never have been in a warrant. We should find a more efficient way to do that, and I believe that something like that would also provide more flexibility for our department heads and departments to take advantage of good opportunities when they come along. John Boland earned a place in my heart when he once talked about how, you know, he would wait until he could see a good piece of used equipment before he went out and bought something, and you know. My heart just melted at that point. So I think we need to start thinking about that. Maybe we don't, we do it with only one department, one sort of thing to think about. Rather than having, you know, a warrant where, you know, we call out every dump truck and every bolt that we need, you know, to try and make town meeting a little quicker.
Well, this is a good segue to a question I have, and it's real, I guess, for both Brian and Kathy, because I think you would remember. Last year, my recollection was the Saturday meeting really just focused on operational budgets, right?
It did.
Where did we slot into the cycle, consideration of capital?
We did it earlier. So Jason came forward with CAF committee, so, and I still think we should do that, because we can get that done early.
I think that's a good idea.
Right? He's, I think they're starting to finalize their.
November, late November or so?
It was early.
Yeah, it was pretty early. I know that the capital on paper is due next Monday. So he was able to, yeah, he's usually able to be ahead of us a little bit with that stuff.
Okay. Although it got refined as we got closer.
And we kept talking about Al Gonquin, too, which we should have, it was a big thing. So Al, you know, when you and Mr. Butler were on advisory, there was a big discussion, remember the year where the discussion over stabilization or not, right? Pros and cons. In advisory's viewpoint, even if it wasn't unanimous, it was majority, was that let the people keep their money, don't keep much in the bank, et cetera. So I think we should take it up again and talk about it again. I've come around. I know Brian, I think, is a fan of stabilization. I've got, I've read John's white paper probably 10 times. But given what's happened the last few years, it would have been so helpful to have some money in the bank, like the state does, to have drawn to keep that year-over-year tax increase lower for houses that we, I mean, you know, it's been high. So I'd like to, at a meeting with advisory, you know, actually just talk about the philosophy of stabilization, whichever form, you know, overall stabilization, capital stabilization, whatever.
It's a legitimate topic. My views haven't changed, not surprisingly. So there's two things. One is setting up funds that we contribute to on a regular basis for the purposes, say, of buying DPW equipment versus funds which are unallocated, that are the town's savings account. And I think I, I used to believe that many, many years ago, and Mr. Butler removed the scales from my eyes. We can have exactly as much money as we are willing, as people are willing to raise their hands for, not a penny more, not a penny less. And that money should stay in the taxpayers' pockets until we have some compelling need for it, that we can convince them of the rightness of the expense.
I mean, the reason, we've talked about the last few years, but we just never have had a year where we could set aside any money. We've always had to scrape just to get the budget down to something reasonable, so there was never really a chance to do it, even if we wanted to do it. So anyway, maybe, maybe things are changing a little bit.
Discussion for another day, right?
Yeah, I agree with you that it is a decision we should make explicitly rather than implicitly.
Okay. But other than that, we're all set with the calendar?
Yeah.
Looks good.
Okay.
So the only clarification is we do agree those three should be called out to another night.
Separate meeting.
Okay. Just wanna make sure those are the three. Okay. Sounds good. So, and moving on, I know there was some questions about general data.
So this is the most important slide, I think.
Yes, this is probably the most important wide slide, I'm sorry. So here's some, and there's probably others that we could think of that may not be as material, but certainly, these are some of the issues. Obviously, the board is well aware of that first one. I don't think I have to even explain that, but there'll have to be some decisions made around that that issue. The second is something we've started to talk to the IT director about, which seems to be some consensus, at least, to get into the cloud with some of the public safety data. It could be a substantial investment. It could be six figures. So just for the base amount, and then.
High or low six?
Uh, high. Which is higher than I thought, but.
That's surprising to me. Do we have a good estimate of that, do you think?
No, not yet.
It surprises me, too.
Yeah, I wanna caution that.
Yeah.
You know, it'll kill me if I say that that's definite, but it's just in very preliminary stages.
Well, let's figure out what it is.
Right, and then deal with it. And I don't know the ongoing annual expenses either, but I wanted to put it on there as something that, you know, could be an issue. We'll see. So that's TBD. I just thought there were some things that we should take note of, that the general fund debt is pretty much level compared to last year. The board will be signing some notes at the end of this month.
Current debt, current debt.
I'm sorry?
Existing debt, not debt, new debt for new capital.
It'll be new debt, no, it's existing projects, but it'll be permanently financed. There's gonna be an interest payment by the end of this year. So that, I mean, a lot of it is not general fund, so it doesn't, it won't, there's only a small amount that's general fund, so it's still gonna stay within this envelope of being pretty close to last year. It won't be a huge.
But this one may increase it as far as whatever we do with the current year capital.
Correct. Correct. Free cash, I know there'll be questions of in the next month of what is it? We're getting close. The books aren't closed officially for June 30th yet. There's some just lingering issues. Nothing serious, but just lingering administrative issues. So I have a feeling, and I'm just a feeling, it's going to be no less than last year. So I would anticipate it's gonna be more. How much more, I don't know, but it's, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be more. Again, the Commonwealth, I think they're in a good position. They have, compared to us, they have a lot more opera money than we have. A lot more. So I think for at least the next couple of years, they should be on good footing, too. We'll see how the economy goes, too. The general capital, I put this in, it's a four and a half million increase, which is a substantial increase. However, one project in that, on the school's side, is about half that. And I have a feeling, even if that went forward, it'd have to be a bonded project. It's a roof at Trotter. So I haven't heard if that's still on schedule for being approved next year, but just note that that's a little misleading, even though on paper, that's the way we have it. Again, cost of goods, we're all familiar with inflation, so in the operational budgets that you'll have in front of you at the end of, in November, just keep that in mind, that there could be some costs, general costs that may go up for materials, and hopefully, the department heads can be wise about that and use their heads about the best way to face some of those things. And the value shift, I know in previous years, it's been a very big issue. This issue's gonna go much less material this year. I can't speak for the assessor, but it seems like if there is a shift, it's gonna be much less than last year. So again, that's good news. We'll have more on that fairly soon, but not quite yet.
But we don't even know what 1123 is yet, so it'd be nice to get that soon.
Correct.
Yep.
So that's those issues.
Brian, one thing that we have talked about that I actually care about is an additional staff position for the technology group, senior staff person. We talked about, clearly, that's gonna be a hard sell, but at least that's still on my radar for something that we need to consider as we get more and more technology-dependent. That skill set, I think, becomes more important, and it's more costly to not have the right kind of staffing there, so.
I know that was a big issue, obviously, you know. A couple of years, and that's a
So anyway.
Very big issue that, and then what level do you want it?
Yep.
Full-time, part-time, yeah. But we can certainly have.
So I will continue to ask about that. I may get outvoted, but I think that's important. Thank you.
This next slide is just a historical slide. It shows the historical tax rate, which may or may not be interesting to you, but it also shows the average single-family bill in Southborough, and the average increase, which, you know, may surprise some people. Some people would think it was a lot higher, some may think it should be lower. And the average tax rate increases, again, I'm not sure the value of that piece, but the average bill probably is worth a little bit of value. It's interesting to note, the state average, the entire state, is about 3.8. I looked at the same timeframe, 3.8, 3.7, something like that. Yes, same thing, 15 years.
3.38 versus 3.8?
3.38 versus like 3.8, 3.7 is where the state is.
But that number is the one I hear about all the time in terms of my tax bill. People don't really focus on the rate appropriately.
Right. Right. So and a lot of people, you know, that aren't familiar, like we all are, with how taxes work, they focus on the tax rate and figure if it goes down like that, then there's an automatic correlation between your tax bill, so obviously, that's not always true. Here's the FTE. Mr. Hamilton had asked for some data on this when he first got elected, and I've incorporated this just to show, interestingly, this is a five-year FTE change, and it's up about 5, 5.02, as you can see. It is interesting because it does include library part-time staff, but it doesn't include seasonal recreation staff and things like that. And obviously, most of that's paid out of the Recreation Revolving Fund, so.
It does or it doesn't?
Does not.
Not agreed.
Does not. So this is basically all your core departments exempting schools. I didn't get the schools' data, but this is the town side. And again, it does include the part-time part-time library. It does not include the part-time dispatch. Full-time dispatch, yes, not part-time, because that had a few years that fluctuated so much, I couldn't kind of parse it out. I want it to be as accurate as possible, so so that just gives you a sense that over these five years, we've gained these five additional positions. And again, it's a combination of the entire, it's not five, you know, identifiable positions. It's take your total hours, the equivalent of five positions. And this is the 10-year change, and I think this is the one Mr. Hamilton maybe had seen, so probably no surprise to you. But this is. probably no surprise to you. But this is 10 positions on the town side, same, same methodology. So we've grown, and that's a debate we have every year of how much we can grow and should grow and will grow. So I think this year, we're going to have that discussion again on some levels. Again, general information that capital could provide, but this is just general fund, which sometimes we focus on the total, but I like to look at the general fund. And actually, as you can see, they've done a pretty good job, the committee and, and everyone, you know, who's participated in this, has kept a very stable amount of general fund money for capital appropriations. So I really think this is good. And again, capital is due next week, and I'm hoping sometime after that, there'll be some stragglers, but sometime after that, we can update this a little bit for, for next year also. And general fund debt authorization is just isn't interesting. Again, general fund, but we really haven't authorized too much in the last five years as far as bonds. So that's not bad. I know that, you know, the school is looming, and.
So remediation of breakneck hell?
Breakneck hell.
Yes, breakneck hell, which hopefully will not be the full authorization. I think that was quoted on the high end. So we'll see. The bids, I think, will win out.
The bids aren't back?
I don't, no, okay. No, they're not back. So yeah, so I think we're setting ourselves up at least to, you know, absorb another project on the school side. I don't know how to say that right, but how they, you know, we're in a position to approach it without having all this other debt hanging around our neck. So I don't see anything, again, you know, when the capital is updated in the next few weeks to month, it'll really be interesting to see what on there might be bondable projects than a general fund. But right now, it's, it hasn't been overly too bad. Our debt, you know, our debt obligations are reasonable. So that's that. I don't know if there's any follow-up questions?
Can you go back to the slide where you showed all the tax rate changes for the years, did the history? And while you're doing that, as far as the debt goes, yeah, we're in pretty good shape right now. Public Safety Building was the last big one, right? So we got that. That's our big debt right now. And then Ogonkwin's about to be paid off. All the other schools are paid off. And then Ogonkwin's about to be paid off as we figure out what to do with NARE. But this is, for those that were on advisory, so call it 13 or 14, maybe 15, when we were, so advisory did a study to see if the proposed public safety building would cannibalize the ability to build other projects, so new library, community center, et cetera. And one of the things we looked at, we did a 30-year projection, and became very concerned that our tax rate was going to start pushing $25, which you can't go over. That's one of the, what's one of the prop two and a half limits. And look at this. I mean, so, you know, you try, you know, you try to project, but sometimes you can be way off. So, because our values have gone up so much, but we don't worry about that anymore, for sure.
That's correct.
At 1476.
Actually, I think we should worry about it, but.
Well, when I say don't worry, we're not worried that we're going to get to $25. I'm not saying don't worry about taxes.
No, I, I, no, the, you know, that, you know, if we, that assumes that residential values, you know, continue on their inevitable upward climb, which of course, anybody who owns a house probably wants that to happen, but I think there, there may be some economic headwinds, particularly with respect to interest rates, which will eventually start weighing down on, on the rate, on the rate of increase. I will simply note that 3.38 is above the rate of inflation for the period in question. It is above the long-term US rate of inflation, which is about 3.1%. And over that period, our population really has not changed, you know, by more than 100, 150 people. So, you know, the real cost of government is in fact rising when you do the inflation adjustment. It, it's a reality, given that labor is our single biggest expense, and labor is becoming increasingly scarce and increasingly expensive. So I think we've got some substantial challenges there. And I think we need to be relentlessly focused on how we can make the fine people that work for us more productive. And I think that will probably show up in our capital budgets. I had a nice conversation with the head of the DPW about, you know, are there things we can buy that will help the workers that we have become more productive? You know, and sometime in the next 15 years, I think our, our streets will be plowed by robots rather than by DPW workers. I think we need to, we need to be constantly on the lookout for things that will help us make our, our employees more productive.
I agree with that, Al, but the other pressure I hear a lot about is I think our population's expectations have changed over this last 15 years. I think frankly, what I hear, people are expecting more out-of-town government in terms of services. And I know that there is a group of particularly seniors who describe themselves as house-rich and cash-poor. They've retired, but don't have as much income, but their property values go up and their taxes go up. So question is eternal struggle. How do you balance that as people are looking for more? And again, I think there are a lot of people in town who are willing to pay for more services, and there are equal number or larger number who are saying, don't raise my taxes. So that's, that's why we get the big bucks, I guess. I don't know. It's no, no easy solution.
Lord will figure it out.
Exactly.
But you know, Al, if we took off those last two years, I don't, I can't do the math in my head, which, remember, these are houses. This is not the overall tax impact. Business taxes went down the last two years. So if you took those last two years out, I bet your 3.38 would be below the inflation rate. Maybe not much, but I bet it would be below it. Those last two years have killed us as far as what house prices have done. And as long as house prices go up for everyone, and we keep the budget down, then it's still going to be a reasonable increase to someone, even though their house price is going up. It's when someone's house goes up more than their neighbor's is when they get hit unusually.
So, I know we're starting to have kind of a philosophical discussion now, but in terms of anything, any other questions people have for Brian? Does anyone have any questions? I mean, it sounds like the basic, basic budget message is level service, right?
Okay.
For now.
It sounds good. And like I said, it's early in the process. I, I know we'll refine this, and we'll have questions as we move along, so the board can think about things and if anything changes, Mr. Butler can help us.
Okay.
Bring the message to me.
All right.
Was this the school part that we're going to?
Oh, good point, good point.
Oh, and the IAC?
Yeah, the IAC. Anyone have any questions for, for Brian regarding the Insurance Advisory Committee?
Nope. Janice seems like a good appointment.
Okay. I don't, I think we can just keep it on consent agenda, right? It was really just if anyone, if Brian had questions. And Kathy, do you want to give your update on the NARE School Building Committee?
Yeah, so you gave me five minutes, right? I don't think I need five minutes. Okay, so segging into discussion on debt, as everyone knows, we're in the process of evaluating what to do as far as basically NARE. NARE is 53 years old, needs a whole lot of work, not just cosmetic work, serious work, if it's going to maintain, be maintained as a school. So we have signed an agreement with the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, to look at three different alternatives as far as our four K through eight schools. Throw Trotter out, Trotter stays the way it is. So it's the other three that are under consideration. So the three alternatives that are being looked at are, starting to be looked at, are maintain the other three schools in the same grade configuration they are today, right? And then spend a lot of money on NARE to rehab it in its footprint, so it doesn't get bigger, doesn't add a grade. That's choice one. Choice two, both, choices two and three both include closing Finn as a school, not Woodward, Finn. So Finn gets closed, and then you either move one grade to NARE, or you move two grades to NARE. Those are the two choices, right? So you move either third grade to NARE, or second and third to NARE, with Woodward being the other school that stays open as far as the elementary school. So that's the agreement we've made with MSBA. We've signed a contract saying those are the three choices we're going to look at. The NARE Building Committee consists of seven people. It's myself, it's Jason Malinowski from Capital, it's Roger Challen from School Committee, it is Andrew Faugh from Advisory, and then three at-large members that all have a background that's very relevant. So it's seven people. There's, we've got some subcommittees as far as that goes. So the main thing that's been done right now, we have appointed a OPM that will lead us through the whole process, the owner's project manager that basically does, works with us all the way through. He's not the contractor, he's separate, he's independent, he helps with the contractor, he helps with everything that's involved in this from this point on. It's not the same one that we hired for the Public Safety Building. This is a company called Skanska, S-K-A-N-S-K-A, I believe. So they're hired, every, the, the subcommittee of the NARE Building Committee that hired them is pretty excited about them. They were approved by the MSBA, so that's done. That contract is signed, ready to go. Now, there's a subcommittee that has been charged with picking the designer, and the OPM will help us with that process. So that process is starting to kick off right now. So that's the next step in the critical path to, to get this done. Once that's done, then the design process starts in earnest. The town, town meeting approved on, in May of '22, $950,000. That's what that $950 was, if you remember what Brian had up there, to fund the design. The state will, through a grant, reimburse probably almost 40% on that. I think 39% is our number. It depends on the wealth of your, your town. So we should get a big chunk of that back once everything is, is all set. So our cost would probably be about 60% of $950, ultimately, as far as that goes. So that's going to happen. That's probably going to take two years, and I'll look at Mark toward this at least, to truly get to the point that it's ready to go, town meeting to be approved, as far as the, the, the end part. And then you, you go through the process of bidding and getting it built. So we're talking probably 2028 at the earliest, before this is all done, which sounds like a long way away, but I think that's what.
Done or put on a?
I said at least done. At least, at least 20, it may be 2030, to truly have a school built. So we've had all approvals done at that point.
I'm just thinking about when it would affect the budget.
Well, help me, Brian. So the $950 has already been approved, as far as the design goes. So we're all set for a couple of years.
That's nothing compared to the total.
Right. Yeah, no, you're right. So as far as truly the debt service, you know, he'll, Brian will bond it temporarily for a while as it's being built and just pay interest. So the actual permit financing probably will be eight, nine, 30, something like that. Okay, so your children are going to be already in high school by the time this happens, just so you know.
But your tax rate will feel it.
2028, 2029, 2029.
Typically, the larger projects.
I don't even wrap my head around that, about how you.
They're broken up a bit, so unless you get an interest rate environment, which I think for the public safety building, we did, and we.
Oh, we had a great interest rate, yeah. Yeah, so we bonded that early at the end because we wanted to grab those interest rates. So hopefully, the curve will come down a little bit to help us out in the end. So to emphasize, this is your big picture. This is by far the biggest cost, this is the most costly project we've ever seen, by far, in Southborough. When the, when Trotter and Woodward and Finn were built, we got reimbursed 65, 66% from the state. Our net effective reimbursement from this one, from the MSBA, is probably going to be about 20%. So now the cost way up compared to what the building costs were back when those schools were built. The reimbursement rate is way down for a couple of reasons. So it's the net out-of-pocket to Southport is going to be significant. So it's great that we've cleared all this debt that Brian talked about because we're going to need to have it cleared to be able to world this in, in a reasonable manner that doesn't spike real estate taxes.
Okay. Anything else before we let Brian head out for the evening?
Actually, one, one question for Kathy. Given that it's a 20% reimbursement, and the state also imposes substantial burdens when you, has there thought been given to simply saying, thanks, but no thanks, and we'll do our own?
Yes.
Yeah.
But the problem, we did, the, the committee that was formed to really look at, see if we really could afford to close a school that looked at demographics, et cetera, absolutely disgusted. And the conclusion was 20% is still 20%. If you're talking about, and I don't want to scare people, but let me just use a really round number, $100 million, it's still $20 million you get. So yes, we understood that the MSBA process was going to make it longer, more complicated.
Yeah, that was the first time I heard the.
I promised Jason I wasn't going to use a number tonight, but okay, so.
Is that a nine, nine-figure number?
That's a big number. Yes, that's nine figures, Andrew. $100 million is, absolutely. So that was the issue, is that it still was a big reimbursement, even if you have to put up with a little bureaucracy and have to follow the rules, and it also makes it a longer period, too. So we looked at, so here's your present value, right, that, you know, if it takes two more years because of this, and, you know, costs keep going up like they were, there really is a computation to be done to see whether it's worth it. But we couldn't find any examples where anyone hadn't done it through the MSBA, so that we'd be hanging out there by ourselves if we didn't. So we went forward.
Okay.
Want some more to come?
All right. As always, thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're through the scheduled deployments. Next on the agenda is a chair's report, and this is really kind of a combined chair's report and town administrator report about our upcoming schedules. So we're meeting on the 19th, and then in October, according to our regular schedule, we'd meet on the 3rd and the 20th. But, I'm sorry, the 3rd and the 17th. But for basically just scheduling issues with both Mark and me, it would be more convenient to instead meet on like the 10th and the 24th, instead of the 3rd and the 17th. And we do anticipate having, towards the very end of September, maybe Friday, September 29th, a special just Zoom meeting to approve some bond issuance.
That Brian just talked about.
Yeah, that Brian just talked about. So does that shift in the schedule of the October meetings? Would that be okay with people?
I'm with me.
I prefer it, because I was going to miss that meeting, too, that first one. I was going to do it by Zoom, so I'd much rather do the 10th and September 3rd.
Okay, yeah. That basically takes care of my chair's report. Who had an update on regional dispatch?
So a couple items. I reached out to the city of Marlboro and had a conversation with the fire chief there, and there is some interest. I think the challenge with Marlboro at the moment is that they're going to have a new mayor in the fall. And so I think nobody's going to go out on any limbs until the, until that matter is settled. But they, you know, I had a very good conversation with the fire chief, and there, there is interest in at least exploring it. Sam and I received a very nice letter, Chief Achilles and company as well, and Chief Newell, from Framingham. And, you know, they are, they are clearly quite interested in hosting a regional dispatch center, and they certainly appear to have the scale. I think the next step there is going to be to reach out to one or two of the other communities that they're talking to to sort of compare notes. But that is certainly an option that is on the table. And then I think sometime in the next month, I'd like to get down to see the.
Foxborough?
Foxborough facility. So that covers the current state of regional dispatch. It looks like, you know, Framingham's goal is to have something up and running at the beginning of '25, which kind of dovetails in an awkward way with the discussion we're having about our own increase in the dispatch staff. So, but, so that's the current update on regional dispatch.
All right, thank you. Sam, you have resignation of Russell Gregory?
Right.
Kyle's at the microphone.
I was hoping for a public comment.
Sure, yeah, this is Kyle DeVincent.
Sure. It'll be quick.
Just so you understand, this was just on a members' report here to.
Yep.
Yeah.
So Kyle DeVincent, 82 Newton Street. I represent the Dispatch Union. I represent the Dispatch Union. Just going to read a quick statement. I'm here tonight to address the Regional Dispatch issue. The Select Board continues to pursue a Regional Dispatch approach when 40% of the Select Board hasn't even seen how their own dispatch operations work. With the overwhelming support of the citizens' last town meeting, they indicated that they do not want a Regional Dispatch. The police and fire unions don't support a Regional Dispatch, and as of recent, I will quote a letter dated July 5th to the Select Board. This letter was issued by both Police Chief Newell and Chief Achilles. One of the quotes that stands out is, "We have embarked on a focused approach to invest in our current dispatchers and emergency communication center. With all of this support, I find it very disheartening that the Select Board is continuing on this path. While the state keeps dangling the carrot in front of cities and towns faces in the form of grant money and promises, I can sit here tonight and tell you from someone who has been in the business and worked in the field, most of it is false. I urge members of the Select Board to put their town employees first. Come in and get to know us and what we actually do and the services we provide for the residents. To the 40% who have not seen their own dispatch center, I recommend you make this a priority. To the other members who have already visited their center, I would urge you to visit it again, as we have many technology upgrades and future plans in the works. I thank you for your time."
Thank you, Kyle.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I think there's one more.
Okay, here, I...
Hi, my name's Tom Rock. I'm the president of the Patrol Officers Union in the town of Southborough, and just want to go on the record and state that we fully support and stand behind the dispatchers in keeping everything local here in town as a service to the citizens, as well as to the officers and dispatchers here in town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Sam, do you want to give an update?
No. Mr. Gregory, yep.
Yes.
We received a communication from Russ Gregory that he's resigning from the Conservation Commission. And I've known Russ and worked with him for a number of years, and I guess I'm sad to hear this. On the other hand, I can't fault his decision. He's spent 15-plus years on the ConCom and been a real asset to the Commission. His combination of on-the-ground experience from his landscape and construction business and his dedication to the wetlands world in terms of experience in dealing with projects in various wetland areas has made him an invaluable asset to deal with applicants where people had issues. Russ was always the one who came up with the solutions and said, "Well, you might try doing it this way, or if you did this alternative, it could work and be more practical, et cetera, et cetera." So he is not the only one with that kind of experience on the Commission, but his participation from that angle has been hugely valuable for the town. And it'd be a real loss to lose him, but maybe we can lure him back for other volunteer work in the future, who knows? But again, we owe him a real debt of gratitude, and I think we are in the process of writing him a letter, a thank you letter, which we will work to get out to him. So thank you, Russ, and good luck with your next steps here. Thanks.
Did you have another quick member's report?
Another quick member's report, just something that came up recently here.
On, okay, thank you, sorry. Another quick update, something came up recently, not in time to get on the agenda, but just sort of a heads up. I've been following the conversations with our Planning Board and Open Space Preservation Commission about native plants, native trees particularly. And at a recent meeting, there were some comments made that made me aware of the fact that the tree policy that the Select Board approved not long ago, but this past May, actually is inconsistent with what our bylaws say in terms of replacement trees. And so I think it's important to make sure that all those things work together, and I'm going to make a proposal that we, as quickly as possible, take the opportunity to put that on an agenda and put out whatever proper notices are required and let people comment on that. But I think it's important to get all those things in alignment so applicants know what's expected of them in a consistent way. And again, I think that's an important thing for the public to understand and to know what they're working with. So I think we need some repair work there, and I will be continuing to pursue that. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I think that's it for the member's report.
One more.
Oh.
If we will have...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's all right. This one's easy. Can I go?
Go for it.
Okay. So this is Al and I doing this. I'll speak, Al, and you can add anything to it. So I acted as Al's secretary, since he's the chair of this now. But long story short, remember, we approved, basically, the process of the report that we need to send to the CPC each year from the Affordable House Trust to make sure they always know where the funds that came from CPC, or CPA, stand. So we did that. They had a meeting, and I think Sam actually heard the meeting. Ben Smith sent me a really, really nice email saying this is what we did. They, I don't think they've officially voted, but he said on 9/11, they will vote to move the money that was previously approved in those three articles to the actual trust fund, so we'll have that part done. The second part of the letter asked him to also support a warrant article next March that would move everything else that's sitting in the affordable housing buckets at that point, plus future allocation of those buckets immediately to the Affordable House Trust Fund, so that the Affordable House Trust can then immediately utilize that money if a project comes forward and not have to wait for the next town meeting, and not necessarily a positive vote. That one, I don't think, I don't think that one was approved. I think there was two persons that thought it should happen, three that didn't. So we've got some work to do there. So I plan on going to the meeting on the 11th. Al, you may want to go, too, so we can talk to them. Because the whole purpose of the trust fund is to be able to move quickly, right? So if you're not going to put the money there, then why do you have the trust fund? So I'm hoping we can, in person, be more effective than what was in the letter.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've just got a few items. First one, I just want to note to the board, Fire Department is doing its annual September 11th Remembrance Ceremony, Monday, September 11th, 10:00 a.m., down at Public Safety, out at the memorial out front. It's usually very brief, probably no more than about 20 minutes. I always find it very moving, and so it's, if you're able to attend, please feel free to join us. I've got a bunch of good news here. Wanted to talk a little bit about the AFG Grant. The Fire Department was recently awarded as part of a regional grant with Ashland-Hopkinson. It's a total grant. The grant funds are about $922,000. Requires a 10% match, so another $92,000. Total grants, just over a million. And this is for the Air Packs, for the SCBA. We've applied for this for about four or five years, and we really have not gotten any traction. So I think it's a testament to the perseverance to continue to keep going on this. And the Southborough's match is about $31,000. I'll get to a piece of that in a minute, but Advisory had already previously taken a vote to support providing that match, should we get the grant, assuming that the budgets somehow are not able to handle this, you know, over the course of the year. So I just want to acknowledge Chief Achilles' efforts in this. I believe that they are going to be ordering that equipment very shortly. We hopefully will see that in the next couple of months before the holidays. The state has finally passed their budget for fiscal '24. There were three earmarks inside of that budget. There was a $75,000 earmark for increasing accessibility, for addressing accessibility issues. There was $10,000 for council on aging equipment supplies, $20,000 for Fire Department for PPE. And I would expect, I believe normally the way that works is we'll see brief contracts from the state awarding the funds and providing them, and then we're able to spend them. I think that there are some obvious ways to spend these right off the bat. ACABET is beginning work on the new room at the senior center. I think that $10,000 would go nicely into just providing whatever furnishings they need, you know, for that space. The $20,000 for Fire would help to help offset the grant, the local match that we have to make. And again, you know, I don't have an answer right now for the $75,000 for the accessibility, but we do have our self-evaluation transition plan, and there is money that, you know, that can be spent in there to bring ourselves up to compliance on some of those issues. So, and the final thing that I wanted to, that I wanted to bring up, we had a retirement this past week, Heidi Sibelli, Assistant Town Accountant, and I was starting to put some bullet points together, and I had asked Vanessa if she could put something together. And I know when to get out of the way, when people do things better. And so unless she wants to, I'm simply going to read what she put together because I think it says it a lot better than I can. Heidi Lindsey Sibelli retired on September 1st last week, exactly 25 years after she commenced employment with the town. Many peers and residents will recall as she worked as a staff librarian here for 19 years as a valued and welcome face at the circulation desk. She set the tone for superb customer service there, which we have all benefited from. She'll be remembered in the library for being awarded the Peggy Tuttle Award in its early years, which is an employee recognition award. In 2017, she opted for a change in scenery. We received her here at the townhouse, where she has served diligently as our Assistant Town Accountant. Her knowledge of the community, the various departments, and an understanding of how local government can work efficiently was a skill set we've appreciated since her appointment. Patrons still ask after Mrs. Sibelli at the library, and we all know that will remain the same here as we look to fill her large shoes in the coming weeks. So I want to thank Vanessa for putting those kind words together. I do want to thank Heidi for everything she's done for the town, both at the library and both here. And, you know, the process is ongoing to find her replacement, but, you know, it's, it's tough when you see somebody who, you know, gets to retire, and, you know, you get to be a little envious, you know? But it's, you know, it's wonderful what she was able to do for us. And again, you know, it's tough to see the good employees, you know, when they decide to move on to the next chapter of their careers. So just wanted to thank her for that.
So for the Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda Item D is approve a limousine license for Icon Limousine, 5 Main Street. And are you here for that, sir? So I don't know that we need a presentation, but is there anyone that wishes to hold Consent Agenda Item D?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then, let's just deal with it now. You want to speak to the issue?
So thank you for staying so long through this patiently. So welcome to Southborough.
Why don't you come up to the front or to the microphone, just so you can introduce And thank you for your patience as you've not been here for about an hour and 40 minutes.
My name is Malik Saman, and Tony is my partner.
Okay, cool, welcome, welcome. So I know where you are because I get my nails done right next door, as far as, so that's great. We love new businesses to come to Southborough, so this is great. We welcome you, and I just thought this would be interesting to give you a little bit of free publicity as far as what you're doing. So I don't know if we've got any other limo services in Southborough. We used to have, but I don't know if we still do, but there are a lot of people in Southborough that use limos to travel. So you should do well here, but you probably, you should market yourself so that people know that you're here now, right? But any questions for us, as far as Southborough goes?
Well, I'm here to answer any question you want answering. You know, because this is like my family business. You know, I have my uncle in Toronto, Canada, has limousine business, my brother in Egypt. This is our business here. And I have already my business in Milford for 12 years, but I need to expand the business, me and Tony. And I'm here to answer any question because I know there is no any limousine company in Southborough. The nearest one in Framingham and Chusbury and North and Marlowe.
Yeah, so I think you've got potential to do a lot of business here.
So in the memo we have in the pack about this, it says you'll have your office space at 5 Main Street in Southborough, and then the limousines will be garaged in Milford. So what is the office for dispatching?
I have like 1,500 square feet office and a big parking garage over there here.
Okay.
We're not going to leave any car here in Southborough.
Yeah.
This office just for communication only, for answer phones.
Okay.
Location, just only location. But all the cars are going to start to move from Milford.
Yeah, all right. And then you'll have some signs so that people will know that you're located in the center.
We have a red sign in 5 Main Street.
Okay, all right.
And we would add in Google some stuff here.
Okay.
We're not publish, publish too much, so like we get approvals, it'll be illegal.
Yeah, okay.
We have a lot of customer around, like Southborough, from North, Chusbury, Hopkinson. I would like this town, we see like no business in this town, we try to like find new business around here.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions?
Welcome to Southborough.
Thanks.
Glad to see new businesses, and again, I agree with Kathy. I think there is a pent-up demand here for transportation service.
You know, I'm glad of this meeting because when I got my license in Milford 12 years ago, I got it in one minute. I went to the office, I paid $50, I got the license. But here it's good because Melanie, she asks us a lot of stuff, like the corporations, insurance, all the cars we have, everything is a correct shape. A lot of fiber, but I like it this way. No, no, I like it.
Okay, all right. I move that the board approve the issuance of a limousine license to Icon Limousine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure to meet you.
I hope you guys feel like the problems.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Anyone needs to go to the airport? Where to go?
Or the prom.
That's right. Any other holds on the Consent Agenda?
Amazingly none.
Really? Not even the minutes?
Possibly my first.
I actually am going to hold A, the minutes. I just have some smaller ones.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, uh-oh.
So on line 62 and line 94 of the August 8 minutes, where it just refers to Mr... Now I see on line 53, it does say Mr. Michael Ferris. Okay. So then with that, I actually take back my edit. Yeah, I just thought it wasn't clear from reading it too quickly, but other than that, I have no edits.
Sort of like the classic comment that, "I thought I had made a mistake, but I was wrong."
That's another way of summarizing it. So I move that the board approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, E, F, and that should actually be G, not A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, all those items pass. So for the rest of the agenda, for the Other Matters Request for Placement of Sons of American Revolution marker, I had spoken with Kevin Miller, and I know he would like to be here for our discussion of that, so I'd like to just hold that. I would also like to see if the board will be up for taking a five-minute recess. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Sarah's here? Okay. So the next item we're gonna address is review and approve revised ARPA funding request from Youth and Family Services. And our Youth and Family Services Director, Sarah Castle, is here. And I think it probably makes sense for us to bring over Sarah. There's a very helpful, detailed memo in the packet on what she's looking to do here, but I think it's helpful if we get some additional color and background from Sarah as well. There she is.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Sorry I couldn't be there in person this evening. So let me just pull up our memo here. So back when the town was looking to request or asking department heads to submit proposals for ARPA funding, we were very grateful that the request that we had submitted had gained a lot of support. So at that time, we were approved to use $76,000 from ARPA funds for marketing and outreach materials, $5,000 for that, $25,000 for an FY24 contract with Interface Referral Service. And because at the time, it still continues to be a need, but we were really in need of assistance with managing the number of folks who were looking for mental health support. So we had also submitted a proposal for a part-time clinician, and so that was for Unfortunately, things didn't go exactly as we had planned. I'll first give you updates on all of that. But for marketing and outreach materials, we have in this memo here, I had mentioned that we had expended almost all of the $5,000. Since writing this memo, we have spent down all of the $5,000 for marketing and outreach materials. We had a meeting in May of this year with Interface Referral Service and learned that our FY24 contract was going to be less than we had budgeted for. So it's a $17,000 contract, which is based on our previous contract's usage level. And as a result, we have a balance of $8,000 from that particular line. And for our part-time clinician, we quickly realized that we were going to need to have a job description drafted and approved by the Personnel Board to incorporate it in the SAP, because this was not somebody who could be a contracted employee and was going to need to operate within our department and somebody that I would need to supervise based off of the type of work that we do. And unfortunately, that process took quite a while. And as I'm sure so many are aware, it's a fairly difficult job market trying to find viable applicants. So we had very little luck with hiring a clinician, and the window of time that we have available to actually utilize these funds is quickly shrinking. So in the memo I have submitted to you this evening is some proposals on how to utilize these funds alternatively that still supports mental health of Southborough's residents. So we have another $25,000 budgeted for a subsequent contract with Interface Referral Service for FY25. We were looking for some support for updating our space. Currently, our reception room could use an upgrade. We have a resource guide that we are taking cues from our friends over in Northborough, who put together a really lovely resource guide. And this would be a collaborative project between several departments. Some additional supplies for our office, for staff, but also for working with residents, including some materials for workshops. I'm happy to go over that in more detail, but just wanted to give you an overall synopsis.
Okay. So who would like to start the discussion on this? I know I have some questions, but Marguerite?
Sure, Sarah. It's disappointing about the clinician job search not working out. Is there any other way to? I guess, no, my question actually would be, do you foresee still needing one in six months, the way you believed that you needed one prior? In other words, is this a job that you should pursue anyway?
I think at the time that we were working on this proposal, things were very feverish, for lack of a better term. I think things have subsided now. I will say, we could always use extra help. We're especially feeling challenged right now, because I think I've mentioned to you all before, but routinely, since I've worked in the department, we have, if not two, at least one graduate-level intern helping us with providing mental health services. We have no interns lined up for this year. And we're definitely feeling the challenge with that. But it's tricky, because, you know, there's no limit to the amount of help we can get. And, you know, I think there's a debate you can have about whether it's appropriate to just keep adding employees. So I guess where I stand right now, I'm not feeling as though that is an option we have to pursue, but it's always welcomed to have the extra support.
Could you fill me in on why the interns? I know you've had interns consistently ever since I was on the commission. Yeah. What's changed?
This is the first year I've been in town for 15 years now, and I was an intern myself when I started with the department. And never have I not had applicants. We normally have quite a few to choose from, and we get to be very selective with who we bring on board. And I'm really not entirely sure what happened this year. We only had one applicant, we interviewed her, and it was not a good fit. And that was it. We didn't hear from any other applicants. All I can, I think it may be a combination of things. We did all of our usual recruitment efforts, and I have a feeling that there's a lot of incentives for mental health counselors and social work students, a lot of paid internships available, which is something that's hard for us to compete with. And I also just think the field in general is changing. We also get a lot of our students from Framingham State, which I think was going through some changes themselves. So I think it's sort of a combination of things. I'm really not sure.
Okay. And my last question is, are you, I know interface has been very helpful, are you having to give less therapy hours than you ideally would want to be giving?
Because of interface?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't say that right. Because of either lack of space or lack of counseling professionals?
Staff? Well, we had interns all the way up through the end of May and into early June, and then the summer months are not really reflective of how the year typically goes. So I think it remains to be seen how the year ahead is gonna go. I've never, we've never, we haven't had just Megan, the Assistant Director, and myself being the only two providers in the office for the entire time that I've worked in the department. So as of right now, we're not putting anybody on a waitlist, but we may have to do that this year. I just, I can't predict when or how that will happen.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So Sarah, this is Andrew. I think, I want to compliment you on the memo, it's very, very detailed and well documented. I had, just in terms of my own feedback, I had two items where I had kind of a substantive concern. So the first is for the Interface Referral Services contract. So, and this is really just about like kind of a philosophy about how you pay for things and budget things. So where we write, you have a plan now to cover the cost of interface through June 30th, 2024, right? And then are thinking about how to pay for it going forward into FY25. And, you know, as you said in the memo, this is a service that the town has come to depend on. I think if it's a service the town has come to depend on, that we should just include it in the budget, right? I think that's a more, I know that would lead to an increase in the contracted services line item there, but if you don't do it there, you're gonna do it the next year for FY26. I just think it's a more honest way of budgeting. If it's a service that, you know, the town has come to depend on, and I'm familiar with it from, I mean, several years before budget cycles, I would support it. That's my opinion, was I think it's more appropriate.
Yep. It's been in our strategic plan to eventually incorporate the cost of an interface contract within our operating budget. And in fact, we'd be very interested in having a conversation with the school department to see if that's something we can share across the two departments, as they have been involved along the way with some of the coverage of those previous contracts. I think the reason why it was being considered for ARPA funding is because it's an opportunity to support, you know, since the goal was to support the mental health of residents, this was fitting for that. And because we had already, it was already approved to cover the current contracts through these funds. So, but I'm not in disagreement with you. I think that it would make a lot of sense for it to be part of the operating budget.
And then for item three, for the Community Resource Guide, the number of $16,000 just kind of struck me as high. It sounded like what you're thinking of is a, you know, kind of a glossy type of brochure. And have you thought about whether, you know, you could get almost the same impact from just, I mean, I know one other department that did this within the last year or so. You're just a mail, just almost like a postcard, and it has a QR code, and then people can scan it, and then online you can get the same information. It would cost much.
Sure, certainly, this is probably the item here that's the most flexible. And I will say, I was approached first by the Health Department about this project. They had applied for a grant through a different organization that was pretty highly competitive at the time, and so they weren't able to secure the funding. And it was something that we believed strongly in and saw what Northborough had produced, and that they were able to send that to all of their residents. And, you know, again, I appreciate what you're saying, that there could be some changes made to it that would adjust the price of that. So these figures came from their proposal that they had put forth, but we could certainly work with the graphic designer to come up with something that was more within a different budget.
All right. Al?
Thank you for the note. Quick question for you. If we're competing for interns, and we are, it sounds like, should we be offering a stipend?
That would be great. I did consider that for ARPA funds in particular, but we wouldn't be able to utilize these funds for that because of the need to spend down ARPA funding by the end of, I hope I'm getting this timeline right, by the end of 2024 for anything related to personnel. So we would still... So we would still, I think, be challenged. We'd only be able to offer a stipend for X number of months. And because we don't have any applicants this year, it would be, we'd have to apply it to next year, which would, again, be only for half of the year. But I think that that would be a great way to make it, our internship opportunity much more attractive.
It's, it's, it's the way of the world. I mean, labor is becoming more expensive, and if you want it, you have to pay for it. Certainly, is there, are there opportunities to acquire interns sort of on a different schedule? So, you know, I, I am somewhat familiar with this area. And, you know, if, is there, could you possibly recruit interns, you know, in this year?
I, unfortunately, most of the internship programs or colleges and universities that we have relationships with, where our internship opportunity is listed for students, it's either a three semester program, which starts in the summer and runs for the fall semester and spring semester, and is in line with an internship class that they are taking, a full year class. So it would be, the two times a year that we would be likely to onboard an intern would be the beginning of summer or in the fall. At this point in this year, for all of the colleges and universities we've reached out to, all of their students have committed to other internship sites. So I don't think it would be likely for us to find someone for this year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sam?
Thanks, Sarah, for the update. And again, my sort of high-level view says that as long as we're using this money for something that's similar to the original intent, I don't have any problem with moving things around a little bit here. I agree with Andrew. From what I've heard, listening in to some of the Youth Commission meetings, it certainly sounds like the Interface deal has been an excellent investment for us, and something that we ought to consider going forward as a more ongoing, permanent function. Because to me, at least, that gives us very high value for those dollars relative to hiring additional people or whatever. And it's a flexible resource as well, depending on what kind of services people need. So to me, that's a, a key part of the, the skill set, I guess, that the, the department offers here. So I would certainly support building that into the budget. From a intern standpoint, I, I think Al has a great suggestion of finding a way to, to pay interns, at least some, to at least maybe get up in the line a little bit, maybe not to the head of the line. But question for Mark, in terms of using the ARPA money, is there a way that we can somehow, prepay is the wrong word, but package it in a way that this is some sort of an honorarium or whatever that we pay on the front of these things? And maybe get back in the conversation with people if somebody drops out of one of these commitments for the fall? If the, you know, academic institution knows there's X dollars, and I don't know, what, what is a representative stipend for an intern? Are we talking about $1,000, $10,000? What do we need to do to be competitive with that? $100?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, you know, you know what?
I don't actually know. I would need to look into that a little bit further.
But is there a way we could maybe think about packaging that to meet the, I thought that ARPA was '26 for people?
Okay, I was going to say, I wanted to contradict her, but Sarah, what you said is not my understanding. So I haven't heard anybody say what you said. We have always been told that, and read, that it has to be committed by the end of '24. So a contract signed, whatever, and then spent, literally money out the door by the end of '26. So I haven't heard about a special carve-out for personnel, but maybe you're right. So I, that's why I wasn't going to say anything until we could figure out whether she's right or wrong about that one.
Yeah.
Sam, to, to answer your question, my youngest daughter is getting her master's in social work, and she's doing exactly that. She's interning.
Is she available?
Well, to commute from Seattle is a bit of a challenge. But I, I think stipends are, are measured in a few thousand dollars.
Yeah. That's been my sort of vague understanding. So, and that, that to me is short money for this kind of skill, particularly if we can get very qualified people, which, which I think Sarah and her team have done historically. So.
So again, I don't know the exact timing of when she could get an intern based, if she had the money, but why couldn't you pay it upfront? And just, you know, we're talking a few thousand bucks. So yeah, I guess you're in the risk that they don't come back, but try to structure it in a way. So we should figure out, first of all, whether she's right or wrong about the personnel piece. That's easy. We just have to ask Carla. And if she's right, then you would think we could figure out how to do it, and if she's wrong, then there's no problem.
And if you're right, Kathy, about the commitment piece, if, if we actually could communicate to the places where we hire these interns, that if somebody has a deal that falls through, we've got an offer that has a stipend attached to it, and we could certainly afford to organize a process to make that commitment in '24, '23 here, and then spend the money next year.
So I think the one thing, you just need to be careful of, we're using the word stipend, is stipends that we pay for non-union employees, which are controlled by the personnel bylaw.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so.
Wrong word, sorry.
Well, yeah, exactly. I saw, I saw Mrs. Hale getting witchy over there, because we've, we've gone through this before in talking about stipends and, you know, and it is controlled by the personnel bylaw. So, you know, I'm sure that if there is an acceptable way to do it through ARPA, that we can find a way to make it work.
Yeah, yeah, honorarium or whatever, yep.
So this is my suggestion tonight, is to, the small things she wants on here, I'm fine with. I don't have any problems with those. I agree with Andrew and with Sam that we should, it's time that Interface goes into the budget. And if you want to get school to share it with you, that's fine. Still comes out of, you know, you and I have had this conversation before, still comes out of the same tax bucket, but you're right, you would, you know, it has a small impact on the school budget, a real big impact on your budget. So if you get them to, they've already been doing this, by the way, school budget's already picked up a piece of this. So if they can continue to do that, that would be great. But let's, you know, we know we lack this, let's just bite the bullet and get that in the budget. Don't worry about ARPA money. You know, it's all fungible, right? If we end up with excess money here, we put it back in the tax relief bucket, which then can offset the increase in her budget. So it's all going to work out fine, as far as any excess money here. And then, going back to the 16K for the brochure, Marg, this is Marguerite's idea, Sarah. Things change so fast, I don't know why you would want to even print this. Why not just put this online, save a lot of money as far as the printing costs? And that way, it's easy to change when things change. It could be, so I'm all for it, but I'm not sure we need a printed, you know, expensive brochure.
Maybe the QR code idea, for example.
Well, just speaking up on, you know, I was thinking of, remember about a year ago, DBW printed that pink.
Yep.
It was about a thousand dollars.
Yeah, so it didn't cost that much money. And I think it did have a QR code, right? Or at least had a link to a website.
Had website link there, I think.
Okay.
It was very effective.
Yeah, but the benefit of the, the mailing is just, email is just way, way too much email, just gets lost in the inbox. A brightly colored postcard, I think is actually more likely to get.
Get some attention.
Yeah, get some attention.
And we, we had another postcard for the electric rate aggregator thing, and that got a lot of attention as well. That was the green one, so might be something to consider at least.
But I'm talking about a permanent place on a website, prominent place where it's always there, it gets updated when it needs to be, so it's always there. And yeah, maybe send out once a year the reminder that it's there.
And with our new website, there creates an opportunity to put something in place to communicate to people.
The Northboro publication was fantastic. I mean, I thought it was really good.
Okay. So then in terms of action, am I right that for the, for the, you know, office furniture, tablets, therapeutic sensory items, workshop materials, that no one really had an issue with that?
So why don't you make a motion for two, four, five, and six?
Yes. I'll have to think how I rephrase this, how I phrase this. So I moved at the Select Board with respect to the $76,000 that the Select Board voted in June 2022, to have youth and family services used from ARPA funds, that, that money be used for items two, four, five, six, listed in the memo we have in our packet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So that passes. And then?
So then what we do, we take the sum of two, four, five, and six, we take it probably out of the 46K for mental health, move it over to that, right?
Out of the part-time clinician one.
Yeah, so that's 46K.
Yep.
So take it out of that, and then come back after maybe Sarah's thoughts more about the brochure, and make a, you know, final proposal as far as what to do as far as the brochure, then we can finalize what truly stays in, what, what doesn't stay in.
And then on the, Sarah, I know if you were here for the earlier part of our meeting where Brian Valentine was here, talking about the budget schedule, so.
Yes.
If you put into your budget the, the Interface Referral Services contract, and then like at the, the Presentation Advisory Committee, you know, I think you should feel free to say, you know, I came and made a presentation to the Select Board, I wanted to not have it in the budget, but then the Select Board.
But they forced me.
They forced me to do it.
They forced me to do it.
Don't you dare vote against it now, because.
Okay, is that it for this?
I think for now.
All right.
So more to be, to determine.
And continue thinking about finding a, an honorarium for interns, and getting that sort of in the, in the pipeline for programs that may have openings or commitments in September, October here.
So this, this conversation is coming up as, as part of our conversation about ARPA. Are you proposing that I come back with a revised proposal for these funds that would include an honorarium? Or are we talking about through our operating budget, that we include funds there?
I'd be fine with an honorarium as a starting point here, to see if we could do something this fall, and maybe it doesn't work out, but, but.
Utilizing ARPA funds, though?
I, I would certainly support that for a couple of positions or whatever, if we could make it work practically. And if it does work, great. If it doesn't work, then we try for next, next summer, I guess, is the next window there, to see if we can come up with something similar.
And then for the mailer, if there's just a, you know, much simpler way, brings down the cost, then I'm supportive of doing it, using ARPA funds.
Yep.
So Sarah, we're not moving anything out of your 76K yet. All we're doing is taking a piece of it out of the 46 and calling it items two, three, five, and six, right? That's all we're doing tonight. So you still have the full amount to come back and say, okay, let's, let's look at now Plan B for the, the rest of it, that is not being used for the additional cost of the mental health, mental health person and the excess cost of the Interface contract for fiscal year '24.
Right. Okay. That sounds good. I'll work on that and get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we had held, under Other Matters, Item A, request for placement of Sons of American Revolution marker in Old Barrell Ground. Kevin Miller, the Chair of the Historical Commission, is back and would like to speak to this. So just by way of background, you know, in the packet is the email from Dan Kalenda, who had brought this to our attention, was strongly in favor of it. And then also, Kevin had spoken to someone from the same organization and thought it was a great idea. So it looks like it's, it's good that we've got the Historical Commission, and also, you know, representatives from the town's two major veterans organizations that are both supportive of this. Kevin, do you want to speak to the issue?
Sure, I, thank you. I understand that you juggled the schedule a little bit to accommodate me racing out from Boston, so very appreciative, and I hope I'm quite moderately coherent. Anyway, yeah, I, you know, Joseph Gautier of MASAR, that's the acronym for Massachusetts Sons of the American Revolution, reached out to me early in August, and he had indicated that somebody from Southboro had reached out to him. So maybe that was Mr. Kalenda. He couldn't remember who it was when we talked. But when he contacted me on August 7th, I was right back to him in a day, and we were on the phone, I think, within 48 hours, because I was really interested in this email that he sent to me, explaining that he had begun a program. And Mr. Gautier, just for background, you know, in MASAR, chairs, among other things, he's the State Eagle Scout Committee Chair, and the State Committee Chair for their ROTC and ROTC, and J. ROTC programs, and the Sea Cadets, and he does all kinds of other stuff. But he indicated that he had begun a program to place bronze markers in Massachusetts cemeteries, listing the names of Revolutionary War soldiers. And asked me, and he said, you know, we've done about a half dozen communities, he gave me the list, as I sent to you, it was Gloucester, I believe was first, there's one in Hudson, there's one in Marlborough, in the Old Common Cemetery, which is quite attractive. That's the cemetery right next to the town library, which is the former high school, so right dead center of town. Also in North Harwich and Wellesley, and they've also ordered for situates. So a half a dozen towns. And he said, are you interested? And I said, you bet I am. And under this program, they pay for the whole thing, they coordinate the production, they provide the sign, the pole, and they install it. And what's very nice, as I pointed out to you, I think I sent you the article from the Community Advocate for the Marlborough Placement, they have various sort of color guards, reenactors that are local to various districts in Massachusetts. And he indicated that actually that the one that covers our district is quite active. And they went out for the Marlborough dedication, and they do something that's similar to like what goes on in Lexington and Concord on Patriots' Day, so they fire off muskets, and they unveil, and they're in full regalia. It's really quite nice. So I was interested in it, both from a standpoint of, you know, marking the Revolutionary Veterans, but also as generating some interest toward the Tricentennial. So they'll send out the reenactors, he indicated, you know, there'd be a strong interest in doing that. So, you know, I was quite excited, and, you know, as you folks know, I emailed you and then the Historical Commission at the same time, you know, with the details on that. You know, and I, I'd, I'd like to sort of, the Historical Commission to take the ball on this, in a collaboration with certainly Mr. Why Not, Mr. Sterns, Mr. Kalenda, whoever else from the VSOs is interested, and get this done in pretty short order. Mr. Gautier indicated that the, the beauty of his position is that he's got the funding and the authority and the mandate to move swiftly and without a lot of red tape. So he indicated to me that he can get it done. Then, just a couple of things I'd say is, you know, I, I think you all know that we have Sally Waters doing research for us now, trying to clear up issues in the OBG, so we had really complete and accurate information. So this really, when I heard from Mr. Gautier, was even, you know, more exciting, because we were on that track anyway. And Sally had given me some preliminary numbers that she's winnowed down what had earlier been a much larger list, that the current thinking is there are 25 marked Revolutionary War graves in the OBG, and 34 unmarked. So what is that, 59 in total? But she said, you know, she's got some question about a couple things, she's continuing to do research to get, we want very accurate, obviously, information and figures. And she indicated, for instance, that she'd like to come before the Historical Commission, and I would certainly like Mr. Why Not, maybe Mr. Sterns present when this happens, to present her findings on a couple of particular cases, so we can make a judgment about, you know, whether they should be included or not in the signage. But I'm, I'm quite encouraged by this. The signs, you've seen the photos that I sent, they are remarkably, yeah, consistent. Thank you, Marguerite.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're remarkably consistent with what we already have now in hand for the National Registered District. Our National Registered District signs are 24 by 36 oriented landscape, basically, you know, up and down. The ones that, the MASAR signs are more portrait, but they're bronze, they're the same character, they're actually on a black pole like ours are. And so they'll be, I think, visually nicely consistent. Last thing I'd say is that there, as. Last thing I'd say is that there, as you may know, there are already two plaques, bronze plaques, in the OBG. One is a very small one, that's at the base of the flagpole over here, and it's dedicated in honor of Southborough's American Revolutionary War Veterans, 1775 to 1783, and it says, "With eternal gratitude to those who made the supreme sacrifice," and it lists the three who died during the war. Interestingly, one of those majors of Zia Faye was poisoned in New York, and is buried in New York. The other two gentlemen, privates Jesse Anselman, Private Joseph Faye, both died at Valley Forge in 1778, and they are not buried, so none of those three are actually in the OBG. Then there's one additional plaque already over there, that's that large one that's embedded, attached to a stone that's in front of the flagpole, and that one reads, "Old Burial Grounds, this tablet was erected in 1995 in memory of members of early generations of the town who were buried here in graves marked and unmarked between 1727 and 1895." So in my thinking, and this would have to be discussed with the full Historical Commission, with your input, and with the input, I think, of Mr. Sterns and Mr. Wynott, I would imagine this sign would go very well right at the opening of the wall where the gate is, or possibly along the side, Common Street sidewalk coming up, so people walking up from the library to the townhouse might catch sight of this sign and then be prompted to come in and investigate. So it's really, you know, exciting, and I think it sort of solves the problem that was discussed, you know, during the flag conversations, about, you know, how to appropriately honor and mark, you know, the fact that we have 34, according to Sally's latest numbers, unmarked Revolutionary War graves. They certainly, you know, deserve, and it's been our desire from the first to mark them. So I'm thrilled about this, and it would come at no cost to the town. Good news.
So the things that would need to be, what you're looking for from this board is just, we like the idea, so then you, then the, I don't have the acronym right.
MASAR?
Yeah, MASAR, could get, make, start plans to make the sign, but you still need to finalize the list of the names.
We need to finalize the list, and I think that's going to take, you know, possibly a month or two, sometime, there's production time. Our signs for the National Registered District took about six months in production. So I would say that, you know, if you gave me the go-ahead to move forward and to cooperate with the, you know, the VSO people, you know, I think we could, you know, see this in the ground by the next spring, and which would be, again, a nice run-up toward, you know, the Tricentennial Committee, I think will be seated and in operation by then, and so generate some excitement in town.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, no, I heard the comment.
Can I make the motion, and then we can talk about it? Because I thought about this and wrote it out, to make sure we included everything that you just said.
Okay.
I got a question for you, Kevin, first, before I do this. The 34 unmarked ones, this is probably a stupid question, we know who they are, we just don't know where they are, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, again, Sally's got, she's got some open questions on some, because she's, part of what prompted her approach to me to do this work for us initially was her belief there would have been a pamphlet that had been done about a generation ago on Revolutionary Veterans, and the Historical Society has that document, and she felt that there were some inaccuracies in it, or some incomplete information, and so pursuant to the conversation we had last fall about all this stuff, I thought, "Well, great, you know, I'd like to have somebody on this," and I don't think there's anybody in town more qualified, or with more experience doing it than Sally, so she can get to the bottom of it.
Okay, so here's the motion. So I move to approve the installation of a Revolutionary War marker honoring known Southborough Revolutionary War vets, including those buried at the OBG, funded by the Massachusetts Society Sons of the American Revolution, as described to Kevin Miller, Chair of the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission is hereby asked to oversee the details of the installation in consultation with Sally Waters, Steve Wynott, Dan Kalenda, and Brian Sterns.
Second.
Well, I don't have much to session, I think that one's fine for me.
I've got, so I think we need to think carefully about where we put the sign.
I agree.
It's... I'd like you to put it someplace where someone can put a flag in front of it on Memorial Day. Other veterans, you know, we, in particular, a flag for the 36 who we don't know where they are. I would suggest that Memorial Day would be an excellent place, time to unveil the sign, if the schedule can be made to do that.
Yeah, if the enactors, you know, are available, I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
And I, it's interesting, the one in Marlborough, which I, most recent, that was the one I sent a photo, the board of, that doesn't have a flag, it's at the convergence of, what are those streets, I haven't written down, golly, Central Prospect and Cashman, I don't know if you know that area? There's a Greek Orthodox church, right, sort of kitty corner, but as you come into the cemetery there, there's just the plaque, and it's quite striking, but I, point taken that, you know, possibly flag is laid.
It would not be, it would not bother me if the plaque was actually inside the bounds of...
Right, inside the walls.
Inside the walls.
This is something we don't need to deal with tonight, it's just ordering, ordering.
You know, yeah, we'll have months to think about this, but I'll definitely want to come back to you and in consultation with the VSO folks, you know, Mr. Wynott and so on, see what their views are, and also, we'll have to be mindful of not, of course, putting it disturbing a grave where we place it, so, but I think that can be accommodated.
Great.
Okay, so was there a second of your motion?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, are we ready to vote on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you kindly.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting for me and being so supportive, and I think this is a great thing, and I'm really excited, it kind of brings a lot of parties together, a good cause, so thank you.
Do we know if the gentleman who was poisoned in New York was wearing his Red Sox hat?
Poisoned by a tortoise.
My goodness. Old feelings run deep.
Actually, there was a significant rivalry even back then.
Even then, that's right.
Yeah, the New Yorkers were known as being loud and obnoxious even in that period.
And holding a grudge.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of comment letter to Mass Housing for 250 Turnpike Road 40B application, and our deadline to submit this is this Friday, right?
Correct.
Okay, so Mr. Hamilton has very generously put together a red line version of the original letter that was based on the original submission, shows the changes, and write, "The main change in Ferris's proposed plan is basically sinking the building deeper into the foundation, so that even though it's still a four-story building, it, there's, it's significantly less..."
It's significantly lower.
Lower, against the skyline, right?
Yeah, the original proposal had him bringing in massive amounts of fill, which would have put the first floor of the building roughly 20 feet higher than the first floor of the existing building at 250, and he's, appears to have reduced the first floor by about 15 feet, and that would bring, that would ease the burden on the folks in Skylar to having to look at a roof, but it would not make the building invisible by, in any sense of the word. But that is the principal difference, I think there were a few other small ones, I think there were some, there was an outbuilding, there was a garage slash storage that got dropped from the plan.
So, and that's really illustrated by, on the last bullet point you have in the second page of the letter, instead of the proposed building sitting 20 feet higher than the new Beehive Building.
Right.
Right? It would be...
Five feet, yeah.
Okay, that's like the equivalent of a whole story less.
Story and a half, actually.
I mean, my opinion, I've looked at, I'm on board with the changes that, the red line changes that are in the number letter.
Me too.
I got a few comments, and I'm not wed to these, I think it's a good letter as always, and I'm glad we are supporting this project. Again, I think the developer has shown a real willingness to try to accommodate some of the comments by the neighbors, so I appreciate that. Okay, so let me just get my stupid one out of the way first, Al. So if you go to the top of the second page, first bullet point there, you just need a comma after the Conservation Commission, sorry. Okay, Marguerite, I did that for you, okay, and Judy, so that's my silly one.
Oxford comma.
Okay, now, the rest of them have a little bit more substance to them. Okay, so if you go down to the next sentence that you've underlined, which I agree is so important for, I hope, Mass Housing to appreciate, that they did go back and revise things as a result of comments from the neighbors. So I would suggest that the developer has also modified their original plans based on feedback from various forums in our community, and submitted revised plans as a result of that feedback. So I'm just adding a little bit more emphasis on that sentence to make sure they understand they really did listen and came back, and have submitted new plans at more cost to them to try to accommodate the major concerns of the abutters.
And I know that they have also indicated that directly to Mass Housing also, so we're just underscoring that.
Emphasizes the point, yep.
Okay, then, going down to the next set of bullet points, under the paragraph that starts with notwithstanding, so go to the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet point in here, I'm just wordsmithing a little bit here, "The development will require extensive filling operations," and I just said, "requiring thousands of cubic yards," instead of saying "on the order of 10 percent," I said, "requiring thousands of cubic yards of fill and septic filled material." This will require hundreds of, so I say, it said hundreds of truckloads, and I said truckloads of fill, at a fill that must negotiate a very busy Route 9. So are we convinced that reducing, pushing it down some is going to reduce the amount of trucks, that's what we think?
Absolutely, yes.
That's what we think, okay, good.
He's basically taking, yeah, it's, I did, I did an estimate of the fill, and the original estimate I came up with was 33,000 cubic yards, and this will be significantly less than that.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Is he going to be taking material out rather than bringing it in predominantly?
He's going to be bringing it in. He's going to be bringing it in, there'll be a steady, steady stream of trucks. I don't know where he's going to get it, but that's not my problem.
But by digging into the hillside, basically, he reuses fill that's already there, to some extent that he wasn't originally. Originally, they're going to bring in a whole bunch of dirt, lift the whole thing up, now he's digging more into the hillside.
Well, he's not really digging into it, he's still filling.
Yeah, still filling, but net he...
So, the backside of the building will remain at the old level, which is where their septic system is going to be. It's the front of the building, the building is being dropped down, so that the backside of the building will actually be looking at a retaining wall rather than up higher. Yeah, but, but the...
And am I right, this is the, we have no four-story buildings in Southborough right now?
Well, if you remember Mark Davis.
Yeah, we have half a one.
Yeah, it's Mark, yeah.
That's right. He said that's the only one.
Mark is also on the Near Building Committee, by the way.
Yes.
What?
Mark Davis is also on...
On the Near Building Committee.
Oh, actually, is that right, that St. Mark's has a four-story building?
I don't know.
We have no control over that, so, yeah.
So either they do or they don't. Okay, so my last, and these are still pretty nitpicky, so then go after the bullets, that last set of bullets on the page, the first sentence on the next paragraph, "The Select Board, despite the aforementioned significant," I just say "concerns," recommends, instead of saying limitations, the site would just say significant concerns, recommends, and again, I'm not wed to any of these, the letter is well-written, and it definitely expresses their...
You don't want me to take aforementioned out, do you?
No.
They'll fight for that one.
I know, I like the word aforementioned.
That's good.
I know.
I'm fine with those changes too, so...
Okay.
And it's supposed to be when?
Marguerite? Friday. Friday.
I only had one, one, and it's a Judy one, okay. Down at the bottom where it says, "The Select Board, despite the aforementioned significant limitations the site offers, recommends that Mass Housing find the proposed development to be deemed eligible rather than to be deemed eligible." We recommend it be deemed eligible.
Yes.
Just lose the "be" too.
All right, I will attempt to incorporate those and send it off to Mark before Andrew's signature.
Okay.
Good job.
Do we, do we want to re-vote?
Did we take the vote already on, tonight on Tuesday?
No.
Okay.
Might as well re-vote.
We should go on record, make sure we're on record.
So I move that the Select Board approve the 250 comment, 250 Turnpike comment letter to Mass Housing, that's in our packet as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, none, so that passes.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you very much.
Good letter.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the Select Board Office Hours, and Kathy, you had reminded us that we should probably do this, but frankly, I don't really have a suggestion for when we would, when we would do it, so...
We try to do it on Off Tuesdays.
Off Tuesdays.
That's what we have, once a month.
So that would mean, are you thinking September or October?
I'm not thinking, Andrew, you're the Chair.
Why not September?
Okay. Why not September, all right. So then the available dates would be 12th or the 26th? Any preferences there between the 12th and the 26th? 12th would be, of course, next week, maybe, maybe it should be the 26th, so there's a little more time for, to advertise it.
Okay.
All right, I know, do we have any volunteers?
Alan and I did the last one, so I'll stand back then.
I'm available for any of these, so...
Okay.
I like to do it, but I also don't want to take the fun from others, so, you know, why don't we come up with a...
You're going to be out of town on the 26th? Okay.
No, no, I won't, I'll be back.
So maybe it's me and you, Andrew.
All right.
But maybe if we come up with a schedule...
So who, you and Marguerite, or you and Andrew?
Me and Andrew, because you and Al just did it, right?
Yeah, but Marguerite said you could do it on the 26th.
Oh, you could do it on the 26th? Oh, okay, so I'll do...
Okay.
Well, that's true, same has regular hours.
But, you know, again, if we come up with a schedule and then sort of fill in names there for the year, and I'm happy to get plugged in wherever there's a...
Okay.
So we got the 26th taken care of, so...
Usually six to seven is what we've done before.
Yeah.
In here.
Okay, for the next meeting, we'll have some...
And when I usually, I usually do it, it scares people away, so there's not much traffic. I'm a sought-after partner.
I don't think we need to take a vote on it, right, we just determined it?
Yep, go for it.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is actually a pretty meaty one, discussion of future of 21 Highland Street, and so just as the, as background on, you know, why this is on the agenda here, when we set our Select Board goals for this fiscal year, this was one of them, to move this forward in terms of determining the future of this building, so it was back in May of 2021, when there was a warrant article for the, on the town meeting, warrant for 2021 to ask town meeting for permission to convey the building based on a RFP process, and there was some considerable time that went into that. And there was some considerable time that went into that. There was a RFP that would give, you know, points preference to a bidder that would preserve the structure, and then, but it didn't actually go forward, so. You know, since that time, we still have this building, which is a historically significant building, but on the other hand, it's also older and is gonna face some maintenance needs in the coming years. It's got houses, the Recreation Department and the Youth and Family Services Department. There's a lot of talk about, in conjunction with the Neri school project, potentially moving offices around, so I'm thinking about how, how we can handle this. Al, I know you had prepared a memo that's in the packet. Do you wanna speak to the findings that you made?
Sure. I won't bore people with the details of the, the condition, other than to say the building condition I think could best be described as fair. The heating system is mediocre at best. It's a freezer, freezer broil type steam heat, and it's quite expensive to operate. The, the building realistically, if, to bring up to modern standards, is going to take millions of dollars. Even at two hundred dollars a square foot, which, and I'm being a hideous optimist here, would be, you know, in excess of, of two million dollars. And so we need to think about what we do with that, and I think we have some options. It has been discussed a number of times that this building and this site might be an appropriate site for affordable housing. The Shop C and Capital report suggested that affordable housing might be a, a, a consideration for, for the entire site. I think the big question becomes whether we can ever make that building energy efficient. It's, you know, the, the historic windows are not energy efficient, the storm windows are not doing a particularly great job. And it's important when we think about affordable housing that we keep operating costs under control, because the, in order to have a successful tenancy, whatever the tenancy model is, you need to make sure that we convey an, an energy efficient unit so that we don't bankrupt people with heat and cooling. So I, I think we have, I, I came up with eight potential options. Most, one of the first things we have to recognize is that there are two tenants already in that building, the Youth and Family Services and the Rec Commission, and they both have unique space needs, and that we're going to have to find a way to meet their unique space needs if we do something else with the building. So, you know, one of the things I think we have to come to grips with is this building may not be viable. It's, you know, we may never be able to make it into an energy efficient, modern building at an acceptable cost. I don't know that for a fact, but demolition is certainly one of the things that we have to consider. The Shop C and Capital Budget Report mentioned that as well. They said, you know, from a pure development standpoint, demolition is something that would be, should be on the table. We could sell the lot with or without the building. The lot has value. It's on the order of a million dollars. You know, this is, this is developable space. On the other hand, it also has a playground on it, and there are relatively few municipal facilities on that side of town as in, you know, much of the rest of town. So, but the, the lot itself as a piece of real estate is, is worth high six figures to maybe seven. We can keep the building and just keep muddling along as we do. It's not a great solution, and, you know, at some point, we're gonna need a roof. Maybe not this year, maybe not next year, but at some point, we're gonna need a new heating system. So that building is gonna continue to suck down our capital one way or the other, and we need to face that. But that is a, an option. We can keep the building and renovate it for municipal use. We would probably need to do either temporary or permanent relocation of the, of the apartments that were there, and we would certainly need to invest seven figures to bring this building up to a modern standard. We can keep the building and renovate it and use the rest of the site for affordable housing, or sell it off for some other sort of housing. It's likely that that site sometime in the foreseeable future is gonna get rezoned with some form of an overlay district based on the Massachusetts MBTA Communities Initiatives, and it will likely qualify for higher density, which could actually increase the value. Then we could transfer the building to a third party for development as affordable housing, or transfer the entire site, including the building, to a third party for development for affordable housing. Those are sort of, I, I think the, the eight sort of options that are on the table, and I don't know whether, you know, that are there any that we want to rule out in, in our discussions. That might be the simplest way to start.
Okay. Well, another thought that I had, which was more kinda, a, a thought of just gradually getting some more information to maybe, I mean, I think the most attractive option would be if you transferred, this would require a town meeting approval, you transfer the building to a third party affordable housing entity, and that just take over all the expenses. Now, that may be just a total pipe dream, because, you know, the economics of the property don't work in that if you develop just the building, you only get a couple of units in it, and it's just not enough to cover the renovations, so. You know, the response, the one response that came back from the RFP involved developing the rest of the lot, and also the report that Jesse Stein and Tom Bisikul put together, that subcommittee report also, I think, was, you know, premised on, on that, so. I mean, another more incremental approach we could do is, remember when, when Tom was here and we asked him, Tom Bisikul, what's, what's kind of the next step, and he had mentioned maybe getting a feasibility study? And I think one of the the thought process behind that is, if there's some study which is like a basic introduction to the challenges of the, the building, it could help us maybe start to make a decision about, okay, with the money that we have in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, is there a way that, you know, we could start to contribute, and it also might, it could be a resource, potential third-party bidders. So I also thought that, you know, when we, when we put this item on the agenda, and Al, you circulated, you know, sought input from Shop C and Capital, I mean, there was, it sounds like there's a lot of interest from other committees, so it might be worthwhile asking some of these other committees, maybe Capital. I know Mr. Palmer is, is here. What their thoughts are, and, you know, maybe are there any recommendations that they have for how we would move forward? And then we could have some, some more, you know, things to discuss at a future meeting. Clearly, this is something where it's gonna take several meetings to kind of.
Absolutely, yeah.
Formulate a plan.
May I?
Yes.
My name's Joe Palmer. I live at one five eight Parkerville. I was on the Twenty-One Highland Committee. I'm on Capital on pilot. One thing that we, that, that I just asked this committee that I don't think has been really explored enough is the participants in that neighborhood coming in and telling us what they would like, along with doing things like affordable housing, how you're gonna structure this is gonna be really important to get the result that's gonna be good enough, good for the neighborhood. Whether you're going to package it and get grants from the state is also something that needs to be explored a little bit further. That's gonna take several generation cycles if you wanna get the grant money, so if you wanna rehab the building, that's one way to make it more palatable. So there's more, it's, any developer would want that as well, so if you can get that together and package it up for a developer and have the grants all set, ready to go, a developer would be much more willing to develop it on your own specs as opposed to what they would like to do. As far as the building and the heating source, I mean, there are some other options available that weren't talked about in our committee, because ours was really focused around whether affordable housing was possible, and of course it is. It's a big lot, it's got good drainage, they can, you can rehab that, that site to do whatever you want with. But for instance, you could also go to CDC or CPC and get a rec, a rec loan essentially, and put in a pool facility and rehab the building just to use as a bathhouse, which you'd only use during the summer, and mothball it during the winter, and thereby you'd eliminate some of those seasonal issues. I mean, there are some other options that could be explored here. Whether there's a, whether there's a real appetite in the town and the neighborhood to do a different type of project, it's, I think, yet to be really explored. Because I don't think they've been truly asked what they would like. I mean, a pool, you know, some sort of pool facility would benefit the entire town, and something that I think everybody could get behind. I know when I talk to people, they say that's one thing the town is really missing. We have all this water that we can't use. And it would give rec another, another option, facility, and also a money generating unit, because you could tell some memberships in the town as well. So, I mean, there are some other opportunities that could be explored on that property, it's just what the, what is the appetite? And I would encourage not only the exploration of making this a site for affordable housing, but also doing something different as well that might be very popular in the community. Because I think there are other sites, and especially as we talk about the high density with the MBTA and other sorts of, the forty B that's going in at two fifty, there are other opportunities to get affordable housing in, in the town, and this doesn't have to be one of them. This is just an albatross of cost that we're looking at with this building and this property, and the best way to avoid that severely impacting the town moving forward if we're gonna keep using the building. And I, and I do appreciate that this building is the albatross that everybody says it is.
That's a very interesting idea. I had never thought about it all, because I think of that building as so, you know, vertical.
Right.
Instead of, think of a pool building as more.
Our rec director does not want to put a pool in this town, just so you know.
We talked about that in the Master Plan Committee some, to some length, and.
For this, for the South Union Schoolhouse?
Not this, but the concept of a swimming pool, and rec was not in favor.
No, he's not. This is, is Tim that does it. He's got his reasons. Okay, so I wanna go back to what Al suggests, which, is there any one of the eight can we throw out? Because there is one I'd like to throw out.
Okay. Is there someone in the audience with that?
Yes.
But can we finish our discussion first?
Yeah, sure.
All right, so I do not think we should continue to use that building as a department office building. The two departments there are relatively small. There are solutions to where they can be moved to that are better solutions than where they are now. And remember too, though, if we were to agree tonight to at least throw that one out, which doesn't really help us, now we're down to seven instead of eight, there's a couple of things that need to get decided. Planning Board needs to state that they are going to include Twenty-One Highland in the ten acre around the train station as far as MBTA, so we know that, because if you do that, you won't necessarily get affordable housing there. Someone comes in, they don't have to do affordable housing unless Planning Board in the proposed bylaw, our proposed new district, does require some affordable housing. I think they can put up to ten percent as far as what MBTA, but it's not.
That's right.
It's not true forty B type stuff, right? So I think that's gotta get decided. Is it in or is it out, right? Because to me, that's important as far as what they do. If they're gonna do that, then we gotta be careful about what we say, because it limits what can be done.
You could certainly, oh, I'm sorry.
Second, remember, two of the choices as far as the Neri school rehab are to close Fenn. You close Fenn, you've got a huge building for the community, so you don't need Twenty-One Highland and Fenn as far as a community center. You've got your community center there as far as Fenn goes, or Fenn, you know, what are you gonna use Fenn for? So you gotta kind of know what's gonna happen to Fenn too as part of this. If you've got a, you know, relatively nice school that can do a lot of things, then I don't know that you would use Twenty-One Highland for anything town-related. Then, just as a general comment, boy, I have a tough time trying to put this together in my head as far as what, what makes sense here. This is a money pit. We know that. The town is embarking on this huge project to rebuild Neri. I gave you the numbers earlier. I don't think we can separately spend millions of dollars on this building, which I think, I think we've got to try to avoid that. I think it's a beautiful building. I'd love to see a couple of nice condos there, affordable housing, whatever, but I think we've gotta do this in a way that the town's money, other than maybe the Affordable House Trust Funds, aren't involved in this. And I think we've gotta end up, if there's gonna be a project that's viable, there's, you know, remember, we got no bids last time. We got one bid, and it was an unusual bid, so it got withdrawn. So there really were no bids, because I believe developers will tell you, it's a money pit. There's some developers that think it's got a problem as far as doing what they gotta do, so they just don't wanna touch it because of the risk in it as far as all the stuff they run into. So whatever gets put together is gonna probably have to have a package that includes our contribution, maybe state money, whatever, maybe Habitat help to make it economically viable to someone who takes on this. Without that, I don't think you're gonna have anybody raising a hand and said, oh, I'll take this. Because if you ended up with affordable housing, remember, you've gotta have so many units to make affordable housing work. They've gotta have so many non-affordable to make an affordable housing project work. So, you know, I'm not helping here. I'm just probably confusing this more, but I don't wanna keep the two departments there. I do wish we could agree that at some point, they're gonna be moved to, to more tenable places for each of them. And beyond that, I still, I don't know how to go much further without a lot more discussion.
So you, so you would like to do away with four, five, and six effectively, anything that says we renovate the building for municipal use?
Well, I'm surprised you think that that is.
I didn't, I, I.
With your budget hawk hat on, that you think that that would even be tenable.
I, I took the position that I would list out the available options for discussion, you know, there, there, I don't like them either. I agree with you. But I thought, for, for the sake of completeness, there, there is one other item related to the building, which we don't like to talk about, but should, which is, we don't know what's under the building.
That's right.
And, you know, that heating system was originally designed for coal, and the oil tanks are relatively new, and I don't know any more than that, but we don't know what's under the building.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm not eager to put more money into the building, as a matter of fact. I like Andrew's suggestion of a feasibility study that maybe is broader than we've been thinking about or talking about previously. To get some development expertise in here, I thought that the report that the Shop C and Capital folks did was excellent, but maybe think a little more broadly about what could we do with it from somebody who's in that business, and maybe come up with a, a better option that preserves a lot of things that we're concerned about here. I also, you know, am compelled to some degree by the historic aspect of the building, but, you know, and I'd like to get to affordable housing, but I do agree, this is not gonna make or break us in terms of our affordable housing need. But incrementally, if we can get more affordable units out of here, it'd be great. So I'm still, I guess, not clear on how you put all these pieces together, but I, I think there may be something else in there if we can get somebody to take a look at it.
Well, I, I can, I can give you a suggestion for how you might proceed if you wanted to do affordable housing. I think it would make sense to subdivide the lot in some respects, because I think we wanna keep a playground there.
Sure, yep.
And possibly even, you know, expand that area a bit. And then we're gonna, if we're gonna do affordable housing, I think we would have to offer the funds that are in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, could be as much as seven hundred thousand dollars.
Could be a million if we got all the money that's sitting in CPC.
And the site could be developed for affordable housing, you putting in sort of three or four duplexes plus what, you know, and, and it's, there's still an open question as to whether, what could be done with the building. And, you know, so we could put out an RFP that says, you know, we would like to know if this is possible, and we could hand it to developers and others, including Habitat, and see if we got a bite, or multiple bites.
So we, we might donate the building and throw some cash in?
Donate the site and, and the cash.
Yep.
And, you know, the money is there for that purpose.
Well, that's what the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is supposed to be for, so I would say. Well, that's what the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is supposed to be for, so I would support that.
But can I stipulate, you can disagree with this, but that clearly the economic thing to do is to tear the building down and, you know, let somebody build. They could build affordable housing, but if you really want to do it the most cost-effective way, that's what to do. So I think we, at some point, have got to decide whether we're just, we want to keep this building no matter what because of its historic value. And that, of course, is hard to do, there's going to be people on both sides of that. And then do the best we can with the building or not. I don't see how you even get a feasibility study done until you at least make that decision. What are you going to tell the guy? Well, in one case, keep the building, in one case, not, and, and do it both ways?
The feasibility study would be based on keeping the building, right?
I wouldn't, if, if we were going to put it, put out an RFP, what I would suggest is if we want to keep the building, I don't, Kevin, you may be able to answer this question. I don't know whether there are historic funds under the CPA guidelines that are available to, to, we might have to chip in those funds as well if we want, if we, if we really want to preserve the building.
What I'm aware of, Kevin Miller, 18 Latice Quama Historical Commission Chair. Al, what I'm aware of is money through the Mass Historical Commission grant monies that if you are willing to place a PR on the building, they will provide grant money for feasibility and renovation studies. So it's a substantial pool that's in an annual round of funding. That's my area of.
So, so the.
I have to put a preservation restriction on the building.
Just to do the feasibility?
We're not going to tear it down. And then there's a pot, that's the, that's the funding that I'm aware of.
Okay, yeah.
That will go toward funding both restoration and, and study, but it, you know.
But once you've put the restriction on, you can't tear it.
Right, right, because, yeah, the Mass Historical Commission, you know.
Of course.
South Union School is one of only two national registered listed properties in Southboro, individually listed properties. The other is the JDC Bradley House at 5 Sadie Hut Lane, a private home. So the South Union School, you know, classical revival, really grand structure, is the only civically owned nationally registered building we have left in Southboro. So, and I, I just would make the only comment, just without further comment, is that when the building was listed in the National Register in 2011, the preservation architects that did the report described it as well preserved. And I know a lot can happen in a dozen years. But they, they viewed it, and, you know, it's one of those, it's all, you know, one man's trash is another man's treasure. From our perspective on historical, of course, it's an invaluable treasure that I would go to all lengths to try to find a profitable and productive use for, but would, would, would really hope that we could save it because I find it quite beautiful. And I understand that others may not. And I do think the historic value is very important. But that's, to answer your question, what I know is that.
Well, my question is, are there CPA funds available?
That I don't know.
There are, absolutely, there's a historic bucket, absolutely. Now, and that bucket's been tapped pretty good though, the last few years. That bucket's been tapped pretty good, that's what's doing, doing the townhouse, that's what did the library.
Okay, so there may not be that much.
So, yeah, it's not going to have, it's, affordable housing is the bucket that just wasn't being used. So the historical has been pretty tapped out. They got more money that will come in, but it's been used.
Yep. Well, you could, in fact, if you were really serious about it, and by the way, I think it's a handsome building too. I hate the windows, but I think it's a handsome building. It would be possible if, if we were, we're really committed to saving the building to use the CPA historic money and bond it. You know, so essentially use the, the cash stream rather than the actual funds. Now, that ties, ties your hands in other areas, but that, that's a choice we have, we'd have to make.
That's all I had to say is that the mass historical money comes in the strings.
Strings, yep.
It's the PR.
Yeah, which of course it should.
So, Joe?
If you're willing to go through the grant process for the state, there are different buckets of, for affordable housing, some of which deal specifically rehabbing as opposed to building new. And you can go through those programs and they're not mutually exclusive. So you can apply to as many buckets as you want to go to, which include different groups of, of people that are potential residents, such as veterans or handicapped or other sorts of, of, of groups of people. So you can denominate by the type of building that you're going to do, whether it's rehab, new, or other, as well as the types of people that would be coming to live in those homes. So if you choose to go that route, it does take maybe up to two years to get through the grant cycle. But you can do a lot of picking and choosing and you can fill for many different buckets to get the different types of funding that you might want.
We've got a hand up in the audience.
Okay. Could you bring the person?
Kristen Lavalt, rec.
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, and thank you for your, your patience. I don't, I don't have my laptop in front of me, so.
No, 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 no problem at all. It's been good to listen to the discussion. And I've been trying to organize my thoughts here, so bear with me because I am a member of Recreation who obviously has an interested, is an interested party in this. I'm also a member of the CPC. But because I have not discussed my response here tonight with either of them, I just want to make it clear, I'm speaking as a citizen who is however familiar with discussions amongst those committees. I'll try to keep this brief. Especially Ms. Cook and Mr. Hamilton, I respectively disagree with, respectfully disagree with a lot of what you said tonight. Unfortunately, I do think there's been some facts misstated. I won't try to connect, correct those because obviously we've gotten different information on the cost of the building, the cost to kind of bring it up to speed where it needs to be around the roof and painting, and the feasibility of, of continuing to maintain it going forward, and the cost of maintaining it now, which we have very different figures. So my first point is rather than debating this here, I think we need, and, and this is something our, our committees have discussed, so I'm just requesting this as a citizen, that we clearly don't have enough of the committees and people involved. You know, as, as Mr. Palmer clearly said, I think the South Side community would have very strong feelings about this topic. But clearly, it's not something that's out there in the news right now or in it, or the press, I should say, as much as it should be. And part of that is engagement issues, which we've all talked about. But this is a very serious matter you're talking about, not only from a rec perspective, a family youth, youth and services perspective, as well as just the South Side and, and a historical perspective. But to date, I'm fairly certain that Open Space Historical and Recreation would not feel like they've been open, engaged in this discussion. It's not just about historical, although that is a very prominent piece of it, and it is about recreation. They use that facility entirely between the two commissions, while they may be small to Ms. Cook's point. That is where they, they operate out of and they use the space. And the entire town uses the space for storage. The gym upstairs houses karate, we have pottery. I mean, there's been no answers to where they go. I believe the one solution offered was a facility on Route 9, which quite frankly, I don't think most people would get behind. There was a lot of comments on if, if, if Finn happens, if Neri happens, if that happens, but none of that's decided. So to now, tonight suggests that for the feasibility study, you're going to take some of these options off the table. Kind of seems, you're jumping ahead several spaces or several steps before consulting with everybody impacted, involved in getting opinions. I think I would agree that our first goal should be, what would it take to preserve this space? What could it get us? To take that off the table, as suggested tonight, if I understood correctly, is, seems, honestly, it, it seems like we're doing things behind doors without truly involving all the committees in public that need to be involved. So I guess I'll try to wrap it up there because I think, and I have a lot to say. But I would ask that you withhold on any votes or decisions tonight on what options Mr. Hamilton has outlined to exclude them from further consideration. Feasibility study absolutely makes sense, but including everything involved, including clarification and, and actual figures on the cost of maintaining that building as is, as well as maintaining that building to bring it up to, you know, whatever, I guess, you know, standard we think it needs to have. And then furthermore, what the plan would be for moving the two commissions that are currently housed there, as well as all of the activity that takes place. And again, lastly, I don't want to, as a Southside resident myself, there is the, not only the historical, and if you talk to Mr. Parent or others involved, there is a, a great, and, and historical, there's a lot of history there that I think people need to understand, as well as open space. We don't have a lot in, in, as far as town open space that's accessible in the afternoons when school is still, still in session. So again, there's a lot to this and I just, I, I hope that we're not, you're not positioning to take any kind of vote tonight that would limit the possibilities of that building going forward.
So, so Kristen, this is Andrew. You're absolutely right, this is a big topic and we should not, and we're not going to take any votes on the, you know, the future of this building tonight. You know, this, this has been kind of a free-flowing discussion a little bit, it's a very difficult issue. I think what we're trying to get out ahead of is, you know, let's say in eight years, seven years, 10 years, in a, you know, capital plan, there's a request to replace the entire heating system or the entire roof. And then we haven't done work over the, that interim time period about considering alternate uses and we feel like we're in a position where we just have to do something because something's going to break immediately. You know, I think it does make sense to think about using that building in a different way. And I know that, you know, Recreation is the, is the department that would be the most impacted. I know Sarah Castle was here talking about a completely different thing, but I, I spoke with her earlier today. I think she spoke with other select board members about, you know, for them, it looks like they might be able to move to a different, you know, town facility. And that would be less of a burden on them. You know, you're right, it probably would be different for Recreation, but, so Sam, it sounds like you, you are warm to the idea of doing some type of a feasibility study. Obviously, we got to flesh out that more. Now, Al, I know that, you know, earlier you had said, you know, you don't want to spend any more money on studies of anything, but this is a hard one, right?
I, so, well, um, so Kristen, you, you are correct. I mean, the purpose of having this discussion today is to put this on the agenda and to listen as much as to talk. But, you know, I like to put a stake in the ground and then see what, see how people want to move that stake. And, you know, I think we have to do something with this building. Whether we do something with the site is a slightly, is a somewhat different question. But this building, this building is a money pit and, you know, we have to decide whether we're going to, sometime in the relatively near future, we're either going to have to bring this building up to modern standards or, or, or watch it fall apart.
So Mr. Hamilton, again, with respect, I don't think we can throw around words like money pit without just having the actual financials behind it because I don't know that that description is accurate. And again, I'm not going to pretend to be the finance person, but let's just get the finances out there so people can evaluate for themselves.
So Kristen, Al's done a pretty good job about putting the finances together. So we've got a pretty good idea of what the operating costs are, but we hear you, I hear you. So it sounds like your issue with what we said is the disposition of the two departments that currently occupy the building.
No, no, just to clarify, again, I'm speaking more as a citizen. I think it's more so the absence of the opinion of Recreation, and I'm sorry, to a certain degree, Housing because there's multiple commissions involved in that, including CPC, Open Space, Historical and Recreation, and then also Facilities, so John Parent. I think this is a discussion where we've been having it in silos and it's time for us all to come together.
Andrew, I'd comment, one of the values of a feasibility study is to actually get what I would consider to be technical expertise on these things. You get engineer, for example, who could look at the construction, update costs, et cetera. Now, obviously, you know, we, we have a town full of experts, so people will argue with the engineers. But I think that's, that's a baseline, at least with.
Yep.
External professional opinion for a lot of these things. And, and developers, for example, who might be involved in that, that would be a real world input to the process of what might be possible, hopefully would deal with some of the concerns. And I, I hear Kristen's concern about getting the right input. This might be a mechanism to, again, solicit that input, listen to it, and include it in whatever recommendations might come out of that.
Okay.
Another hand up out there too.
Okay.
Which one?
Hi, Grant, can you hear?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes, Grant Farrington, 58 Flag Road, member of Historical Commission and CPC, but speaking in my private capacity. Yeah, I just really wanted to echo what Kristen just said in terms of really seeking input from all, all the committees who have a stake in this. Really, the town has a stake in the building, but I, I just wanted to, to voice my support for, for her there. One thing I, I wanted to note was that, you know, when, when considering the disposition of the, of the property, I would hope, given the historical significance, that, that the town, meaning the select board, seeks to preserve the building through the use of a preservation restriction. I think that especially given the potential zoning changes in the, on that parcel that are expected and also, you know, if the town was to sell it at any point in the future, which, you know, given the kind of wide-ranging discussion is a potential option, that would protect it for future use. And it wouldn't necessarily, you know, it would constrict, you know, it, it, the preservation restriction goes with the deed, so it would protect it into the future, not just under the town, town's ownership. So I just wanted to note that, you know, preservation restriction, I think, is a good idea right now, actually, even while it's under town ownership, but especially if, if considering a sale to a, you know, private developer for affordable housing or, or any other purpose, then definitely I would, I would strongly encourage a creation of a preservation restriction to make sure that the building and potentially the, you know, part of the open space is, is preserved going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just?
Yep.
I, I think it's getting to be late where my acuity is not probably good. But I, I think it would be a good idea to have a feasibility study. And I think the feasibility study could include a lot about what the people who live in that area would like because they have a very stable, very old neighborhood. So I think that would be, I would like to see a feasibility that involved the neighborhood and also all the boards and departments and committees that, that have a, a stake. I think that, I think that would be, to me anyway, the best way to move forward. I, I'm emotionally hurt, I've lived in old houses, they cost a fortune to maintain, they're very charming and lovely, but they're a lot of money. So I'm kind of like, I'm, I'm a little bit prejudiced in sort of like, it's going to cost a lot of money. So I think a feasibility study that, that did those other two, that had those other two factors, I'd feel very comfortable with. And I, I'm going to suggest that we pursue that.
So maybe as, as a next step, it makes sense for maybe two of us to work together to put together a memo with the proposal about, you know, exactly what we would be looking for in, in this feasibility study and then gather, get some input on it from different interested boards and committees?
Sounds good, maybe we've got other public input, we've got a few.
May I comment? Are we doing public comment?
Are, are you going to speak to the?
21 Highland.
Yeah.
You bet. I live at 32 Highland, my name is Justin Chatter, I see that building every single day, every morning. If you're not part of that community, if you don't live on that side of town, you don't really understand the impression, I think, that it has on folks and how it brings people on that side of town together. We sled on the hill, we go to the playground, it's a common meeting space for folks. I moved here during COVID, it's very difficult to meet people during COVID, we're all locked inside. I got to meet people on the sledding hill all winter long, it was wonderful, my family made friends there. You know, I think it's an important space that's worth consideration and not worth discarding. Who is a tenant there, and at the end of the day, doesn't actually bother me, whether it's part of the town, whether it's affordable housing. But I do think the building is worth considering and I think the space is worth considering there especially. And I'd like to go back to what Joe had mentioned earlier, which is just that it doesn't seem like there's a lot of consideration about the surrounding neighborhood. And I know it was an offhanded remark from Selectman Stevers, but earlier about the golf course, there was a comment made about like, well, it's better than a lot of condos, right? I mean, this is some of the dread that we're starting to feel, I think, in this area where something's going to become wedged into a space that's not appropriate there. Which again, doesn't necessarily mean new tenants, it means roads, it means Highland Street is already very dodgy from Saturday at 5:00 PM when Catholic mass starts until the end of Sunday on a very narrow curve in front of my house, you know. on a very narrow curve in front of my house, you know, how infrastructure works there. It's already a dense settling on Atwood Street. I don't think there's as much space there as you think that there is. So I would just like to really encourage folks to work with the neighborhood here. We are the constituents. We put you in these chairs to help us and not to disregard what we want in order just to make the quick sale and get rid of the so-called money pit. I don't care if it's a money pit. It's my tax money, too, and it doesn't bother me. I'd rather sink something into a historical preservation that keeps character on that side of town than steamroll it into some duplexes. It'll look like trash, and you all know it will. And we have to deal with it in Corteville, maybe don't deal with it over here. So that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So what I was suggesting to kind of, as a next step, is a couple of us put together a memo for.
There's one obvious choice.
Okay.
Mr. Hamilton.
Al Hamilton. I would raise my hand to work with Al on this as well.
So you come forth with a proposal for what the RFP for the feasibility study should look like. We bring it to the public, we get comments as far as what else should be included.
And, I mean, a consistent thing we're hearing from is, you know, there's a lot of different stakeholders, right? The neighborhood, and I do live, not in the exact neighborhood, but closer, that side of town. So I'm, you know, use that playground a lot, familiar with it. Recreation, historical, I mean, a lot of the options are mutually exclusive, right? But we can work together on what we'd be looking for in RFP for the feasibility study. And I feel good that we have begun the discussion, right? We can just throw up our hands and say, this issue is too hard, let's not even talk about it.
No, we've got to keep going here. It just may take a while.
They're expansive.
And also, you know, Thieville Hall, that's a, I think that was the right thing to do, that town really was an older property, would have taken a lot of money. And in the end, it was, it took some different stabs at it, took a long time. But now I look forward to the successful completion of the Historical Society's project there. There are ways that we, you know, you can work at this, it can work.
See, that's, and I'll look at Kevin when I say this. So I talked to Mr. Weishen about this, too. He's been extremely frustrated with the cost of that building. Because he keeps, every time they pull up something, it's something else rotted. He has said, and he probably said it in a moment of weakness, that he wished he'd torn it down. And that's, you know, Mr. Historical, that says that he probably didn't mean it, but he said it, because you just don't know what you're going to get into with these.
I think what we're talking about here, and I think, I think we need to get two things sort of understood about the building. Regardless of what we do with it, what would be involved in renovating the building, whether it's housing or municipal space? You know, I use the very loose number of $200 a square foot. I think I'm optimistic. But I think it would probably be helpful to have somebody with better credentials than mine to do that, to, and if we do that, we have to face the really ugly question of what's under the building.
Kristen has her hand up again.
Yeah, just last thing I want to say is that, Mr. Dantone, I would respectfully request for consideration that the RFP letter or whatever that you're working on has also a representative from CPC, Open Space, Historical, and Recreation contributing.
I think what we had in mind is not forming another committee to look into this, but, you know, certainly we can send something to you.
No, not a committee, but just the ability to opine, like, as you're drafting the request, RFP, the chance to opine on it prior to being made public.
Well, what I have in mind is that we would come forward with some type of a memo with a recommendation for what an RFP would look like. And then we'd discuss it at a public meeting, and we'd let you know the, when the meeting's going to happen, and, you know, give you some, a copy of the memo beforehand, so you'd have opportunity to comment on it.
And many others as well. Anybody who wants to, yeah.
Would it be beneficial for us to be able to have a review prior to the public? Just to avoid confusion and maybe work out some finer details that the public, quite frankly, may not, you know, be fully aware of or appreciate? You know, there's finer details, right?
I think, Kristen, what would happen is they'd write the memo stipulating what they think the RFP should contain, and then have the meeting based on the memo to see what else people would like to include in the RFP.
We can't do that without open meeting law being violated either, so we're going to have to do this in public, Kristen.
Okay. All right. So I don't think it's necessary to take a vote on this?
No.
Okay. So that concludes the items under Other Matters. We do have an executive session on the agenda. The last item on the agenda is public comment. And are there any items for a public comment?
I have one.
Yeah. All right. So if you could please state your name and address and the town that you live in for the record.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And it's three minutes, is it?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So my name is Corey Spalding. I live in Framingham. I am here to have a difficult, make difficult comments. I'm here because I have been working with several residents in South Borough who have exposed fraud by the Select Board, School Committee. I'm here at their request. I am associated with the National Organization of Certified Fraud Examiners. I have exposed fraud in Framingham, Natick, Arlington, Needham. It's not too many municipalities that I have not exposed fraud in. My family has been mercilessly retaliated against. My child is now fully disabled. I am asking that this vital business of fraud by the Select Board, the School Committee, be, our elected officials be placed on an upcoming agenda where it would be appropriate. I'm also going to read to you about your fiduciary responsibilities. Elected officials, not town volunteers, have a fiduciary responsibility to their constituents that includes a duty of care, a duty of loyalty, the responsibility to ensure that district finances are sufficiently transparent so as to protect the public interest. The Select Board's job, best interest, is to protect the integrity and strength of the town of South Borough. This includes transparency of its finances. Moreover, since the people's money cannot be spent without the consent, the consent of the people or its representatives, such as the Select Board or elected officials, the fiduciary responsibility is an inherent and constitutional responsibility. It goes on, and it says, fiscal questions should be directed at the appropriate time to the appropriate people. Under the principles of fiduciary responsibility, all questions related to budget and finance from the Select Board as a body are considered valid and should be respected and answered. Again, this matter needs to be placed on an agenda per open meeting laws, which were crafted, as we all know, for transparency of government. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Vanessa? Okay. I move that the board enter into executive session per Chapter 30A, Section 21, and not return to open session to review and approve executive session minutes from August 8, 2023, and July 26, 2023, exemption seven.
Second.
All right, so this is a roll call vote. Dennington, aye.
Stevers, aye.
Okay, the motion carries.